All right, may we please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
United America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Okay. Heidi, what's your notes of volume on your laptop? You good? All right, great. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the, oh, sorry. Let's do roll call first. Sorry.
I'm Connor. Dennis Gagnon, Peter Lewis. Laura O'Connell. Neil Toman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here. All right, great. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the February seventeen, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. This is our usual meeting, unlike our last gathering, which was a special meeting to discuss the Shakespeare Festival application and do the public hearing. We'll cover the public hearing in three agenda items. So we'll get to that in a little bit. I don't think we have that much to cover beforehand, but we do have other business to cover for the town. So thank you all for joining. We'll discuss that when we get there. So we're going to have approval of the December minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the December minutes, please? Okay, second? Okay, any discussion, edits, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, great. I'm sorry, in this, we're all practicing hybrid. There's only our second one. I remember the last time being able to hear the folks on the laptop. Am I mistaken? Okay, all right, fine. Okay, so I will just pay more attention to that. Okay, great. We have some correspondence, a referral of a local law. Maybe we'll let Steve Gabba just talk us through what that proposal is, and the board members can comment if they have any. Steve, floor?
Which local law is this, Neil?
Uh, well, we can't, this way, second one. Well, can you try it again?
It's number one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, which one, which one is it? What's entitled?
Can you guys hear him? Which one is the local law number one that's been referred to by the town board to us?
Right. What's the title of that? I don't, I don't, I don't have it in my packet.
All right, well, let's see. It is. You want to just read it? Do you have it handy, Cheryl? No, thanks.
Local law number one, two thousand twenty-two, entitled Energy Conservation to Update the Provisions.
Okay, very good, very good. All right. What's happening with this local law is that the town presently has the Energy Conservation Code incorporated into the building code, the town, the town code. And the state updated the Energy Conservation Code. So all that the, the town board is doing now is updating the provisions in the code so that our, it's called the stretch code. The Energy Conservation Code matches what the state has, you know. One would expect that the planning board would either be in favor of this or would, would have no, no position on it. I can't imagine why you would be against updating the town code to match what the state has enacted to supersede the code, but there it is. It got referred to the planning board.
Okay, so with, with that guidance, board members, any comments on this that you want to share back to the town board? Comments are not required. If you have, if you have some grade, if you don't, also grade.
Yeah.
Hey, Neil?
The meeting last week, when, when they were talking about referring it to the planning, they were referring this law to the planning board. What, what's the scope of the comments that they're looking for? I don't want to.
Any comments?
Any comments?
You have it relative to the planning board.
Relative to the planning.
A longstanding member of the community.
Okay. Then I'm gonna wait.
Wait for what?
Well, they have a, well, they have a meeting. They have a, a public hearing on this next week. I just think it's more, more appropriate venue for me to, for me to comment there than here.
Good. Playing hybrid game. We'll go with Heidi or Peter. Any comments? No? Colleagues on the phone, Kim, Laura, Dennis, anything along this local law?
Uh, was that distributed though? I don't, I don't see that in my package.
It was emailed to you, I believe.
It was. I missed that. I'm sorry. Okay, I'd like to read it before commenting.
Yeah, it would be hard to comment if you hadn't read it. Agreed. So why don't we just do this? Let's assume that for now, there are no comments at the town board. There's no reason to put a memo to say that, but if Dennis reads it and has anything else, we can revisit it. Okay, all right, let's move on to old business Sadlin and Wensky. I want to apologize again to Mr. Sadlin. Is he here? He's on the Zoom. Great. Apologize again. I, I, I'm not obviously in charge of the weather, but I was in charge of the call to not go out in the weather. So apologies for being able to miss it now twice in a row. I'm going to suggest the following, that we reschedule the, the site visit and simultaneously schedule the public hearing, just to keep this going. Apologize for two months of uncle, not uncle, what are they called? The weatherman, the go, mother nature, God, I was making him a man. It's a woman. Okay, mother nature's fault here. So anyone opposed to that approach in the board? Okay, we just lost Heidi. Anyone oppose in the board of that approach to do boat, reschedule the site visit and simultaneously schedule a public hearing? Kim, Laura, any opposition to that approach? No good. Folks here? No, fine, good. All right. So Cheryl, let's, let's look at the calendar. I'd, I'd like to see if we can get it done, obviously, before the next meeting. So can everyone just whip out their calendars? What's the earliest we can do it is what? The, the sixth of March? Two weeks?
Yeah, the sixth of March.
Okay. All right.
Is the seventeen?
Sorry?
The meeting is.
Yeah. So what are people thinking about the sixth of March? Yeah, yeah. Six of March, Peter? Kim, Dennis, Laura, good. Okay, sixth of March, nine thirty a.m. Mr. Sadlon, does that work for you?
That works very well. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
I couldn't hear you. We get, one more time, Celia. Go ahead.
It does work. Thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you. All right. And then let's schedule the public hearing then for the next planning board meeting, which would be on the seventeen. So I'm right, it's the seventeen?
Yep.
Seventeenth, yeah. So can I have a motion to that effect, please? Okay, second, great discussion. Okay, so we'll do the public here on the seventeenth, and I'll give people a chance to come to visit on the sixth, see the ghosts of Ben, of Benedict Arnold, and then come talk about it on the seventeenth. All right, so that's good. Anything else we should cover, Ron?
Do we need a second vote? Do we need a second motion?
That takes care of it.
That was, we just did it.
Site visit?
Yeah, we just did both. Yeah.
Doing both like that?
We just did two votes. Yeah. Go ahead. Ron, eight on that?
No, no, you covered it.
Okay, John, John Sadlon, anything you want to say?
I do have a brief update. If you can spare three minutes or we can postpone it till later.
Uh, I mean, you can tell, why don't you tell us the public hearing? I mean, sorry, at the site visit. I think that unless anyone has a desire to know the, I think it's only going to be relevant. We haven't talked, unfortunately, about your case for a while. So why don't we just hold it live and we'll do it on the terrain?
Okay, agreed. Thank you.
May mother nature hold out for you and us. All right, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to Cedar Hill Landscaping. Uh, so we had a site inspection, uh, two weeks ago? Couple of weeks ago. Okay, a couple of weeks ago. So Ron, do you want to share your highlights from that, that site visit?
I'm sure. The board is a technical memo from me that summarized the comments in the field. I think for the most part, the board well understood the intent of the project. They identified some improvements that were necessary to site access. There was some desire for some additional landscaping concerning the budding residential properties to the east. And then there was a bit of a discussion as to whether the existing lot, which, which is in the shape of a flag, a flag lot, has to meet the flag lot requirements of the zoning code. I made referral to Steve Gabba to see if he would opine on it. The applicant's engineer has likewise submitted information to the building inspector, should he wish to comment. So hopefully, we'll get that resolved shortly. And then it can move forward.
Okay, anything to add, Steve?
Now, we're looking into the legal issue that Ron raised. I, I think you're prepared to set a public hearing on this, though.
Okay, board members, anyone want to comment on the site visit? Uh, no, anybody? No? All right, let me, let me just make a remark. We did receive a letter, and maybe, it may be premature with the public hearing we'll set for the next meeting, but we did receive a letter from Tina Utz, Utz, Utz. And it wasn't about this particular project, but it was about a topic we, as a board, have talked many times about, which is the ever-increasing traffic on Route Nine and the volume of projects that are adding to the traffic on Route Nine. And I know for, where's, where's Bob? Oh, oh, why don't you come, why don't you up there? Oh, you're such a good public servant. Come on up here. But I think, I think we do need to spend some time with the town board on this topic, because I, I think this project is another example, right in its backyard is a project we approved that's going to be building a relatively large physical complex right behind it on Route Nine. There is a volume of traffic occurring, and that is not an insignificant topic, and it's not blaming any one applicant. It is the very nature of increased building in the region and, and our region. And so I think we're going to have to talk about that. That is outside our abilities of planning board to, to adjust. And I think every time we have a project, everyone says, this is, hey, the state law says you can have as much traffic basically as possible. Route Nine can handle it, but there is a point where the community is raising this issue frequently, and I think it's time we have a thought conversation, maybe with the planning board, with the town board, to figure out what we can or should consider at least. So it's just an open comment without action. Okay, so can I get a motion to schedule the public hearing for, for Cedar Hill for the next board meeting? Thank you, Heidi. Second. All right, Neil, any discussion? Thank you, Peter. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, so we'll have, we'll have Cedar Hill Public Hearing at the September, the March seventeenth meeting. I guess that's St. Patrick's Day, right? Also my father's birthday. So we'll wish my father and St. Patrick a happy birthday that day, as well as the public hearing. All right, anything else on that one? Margaret, do you have anything you need to tell us?
No, I just do want to comment that this is an existing business in the village, so it technically isn't really adding traffic, because they already they're already on Route Nine. So, but, you know, it's a relocation of a business.
You've seen the letter, though, I'm referring to, and if not, we'll.
No, I'll reach out to Cheryl and get it.
Yeah, Cheryl, if you can send around to Margaret the letter from Ms. Utz. And it's not specific to your project. It's just a general comment on the topic. All right, great. Thank you, Margaret. Let's move on to one.
I said this is the least I've ever had to speak at a hearing.
We'll make it much worse next time. Don't worry, Margaret.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on to go and check. Public hearing, Cheryl, you have the floor.
Planning Board of the Town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, starting at seven thirty p.m. in person and at the Phillips Town Town Hall, two thirty-eight Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, and via Zoom to consider the following application. Golinchak Crest Road, Cold Spring, New York, one oh five one six, tax map number one seven point dash two dash three nine, project, minor project, development of a new single-family dwelling and in-ground swimming pool to be served by a new septic system and water well and related site improvements, including new access from private Crest Road.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Golinchak, you have the floor to just give a brief summary of the project, and then a brief summary, please, and then we'll see if public wants to speak. Mr. Golinchak, you have the floor.
Good evening. I will share these plans. So can you guys see the screen? Drawings on the screen? Okay, so this is the location of the project off south of Crest Road. You can see the red outline here. That's the twelve acres of the property. In reference to that, you can see in red position of the house in relation to the site. This overall map shows again the same thing with adjacencies. For reference, here in the blue is the Crest Road. This is our property here. The gray, what you, what you're seeing here is the proposed road. The dark location here, pretty much central to the site, is the position of the house. Septic is indicated in green. The pool is indicated here, a little bit off north to the house, and this is the art, the proposed art studio. This drawing here submitted is the existing conditions of the site with the cloud and a bubble that follows the approximate area of disturbance, which then indicates the trees and, and just general locations of site works. This here drawing is the proposed improvements to the site. So again, you can, you can see the site that we described earlier. Northeast is the entry to the site. The project is working with existing topography contours, so we're pretty much picking, you know, the flattest part between what you can see here as slope. So it's making its way through an existing flatter part of the site, turning at the bottom here around the new septic fields that are proposed and approved by the Department of Health. And again, we land at the house. The back of it here is the arrival point front towards the west, towards the river here. This is the boulder that I mentioned earlier. This here drawing is just analysis of the road, just to ensure that we are code compliant and, and, you know, good standing as far as slope, slope of the road. Most of it is two percent. There is a spot where we need to go a little higher. We, you know, endeavors will be made to make that as, as least steep as possible. This here are details of the site. So the proposed road itself is a gravel road with required drainage on the sides, left and right of the road. Here is the, here are the views of the house. So this is the front of the house. This is the north elevation, looking from the pool site. This is the south elevation. The house itself is a, is a greenhouse, so it's going to be a sustainable house. It's oriented towards solar sailing. It will have integrated solar panels on the roof. This is the arrival point I mentioned on the back, under the cantilever of a little bit of a roof deck. That's where the cars are parked. This is the grand room, sun deck. This is a little bit of a diagram, just describes square footages and size of the, size that have posed structure. This is the same, describes the house itself, the finishes, which is light wood, typically light gray metal finishes on the house to blend, to blend well with the, with the surroundings. I think this is the letter from Conservation Board with, as they, they visited the site, I believe, early in the year. They walked the site. There are no concerns and no comments. This, I think this is the last drawing. This is the Department of Health, Putnam County Department of Health, approved plan for septic sewage as well as the water well. And that, that was approved end of last year. That's the end of the presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Golinchak. All right, for anyone here on Zoom in person, anyone in person here want to speak about this application, anyone in this application, go and check in the room, go in once? In the room, go in twice. Okay, anyone on Zoom here to speak about Golinchak? Please raise your hand virtually, of course. Who wants to speak about Golinchak, not Shakespeare? Anyone? Okay.
I know Carol is here for Shakespeare, so.
Okay.
See, Mr. Fisher.
Let's see if Mr. Fisher wants to speak. Mr. Fisher, do you want, do you want to speak about, Mr. Fisher, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, I can hear you.
Hold on, we can't hear you yet, Mr. Fisher. All right, go ahead, Mr. Fisher.
So, Mike, I wanted to speak about HVSF.
No, 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 no. All right, we're not, we're not doing that right.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right, sorry.
This is the fun with the hybrid, sorry. Is anyone in, is anyone in Zoom land want to speak about Golinchak? Raise your hand. Ms. Corio, are you here to speak about Golinchak? Let's try you.
Okay.
Ms. Corio, are you here to speak about Golinchak?
Hi, yes, I am. Can you hear? Hi, I live on Crest Road with my husband, Richard, and it was just very nice to see the drawings and the plans. We have no concerns. I'm really glad that the Conservation Board has taken a close look at it and appreciate the care that the applicant has put into treating the site with care. I will just mention that Crest Road itself is a private road, so the residents on the road are always discussing how best to maintain the access to that road. I know there's at least, I believe there's at least one other building lot that is in preparation on that road, which will bring the grand total of houses on the prop, on the road to, I think, eight. It's a lot of traffic on a dead-end dirt road that we don't get any assistance from the town to maintain. So that's all. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Corio. Anyone else here to speak about Golinchak? Anyone else? Yeah, please.
Carol, did you also want to speak about the Golinchak property? No, no.
I did. I'm glad to see how everybody got my last name right. Just, just perfect.
Carol? Yeah? You did not want to speak about Golinchak, just Shakespeare? Just Shakespeare, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thanks for everyone, Mr. Golinchak yourself. Thanks for, all right, I was, sorry, I'm just distracted. There's a very hefty cough happening and, yeah, okay. So, Mr. Golinchak, thanks for your patience. All right, going once, going twice. All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? All right, second, second, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, public hearing is closed for Golinchak. So let's, let's discuss the application, because our next step would be to propose, have Ron prepare resolutions for it. So thoughts, board members? Heidi, go ahead.
Well, I was just wondering if the issue of the length of the driveway has been addressed. We had asked Mr. Golinchak to look into shortening the driveway so there wouldn't be so much disturbance. And I don't, I don't know if there was an answer to, if that answer went directly to Ron Gaynor by chance, but I, I don't know the answer.
You're talking with the existing driveway, but a shorter version.
Well, coming around the back instead, so that there would be less disturbance, because this way, it's, you know, obviously, it's an incredibly long drive, but with a very large amount of disturbance. And we had talked a number of times about seeing if anything could be done to shorten the driveway. And Mr. Golinchak had said he'd get back to us on that.
Ron, you want to address that first, and then what?
If I could. The, that was a significant issue that came out of the board's sidewalk back in December. The applicant has subsequently filed additional information to verify his right of access to Crest Road, and he's also provided documentation from the adjoining neighbors in the rear where that alternate access could potentially exist. Both neighbors do not wish to grant them such, such relief. So the access currently proposed is the only access that the applicant has to get to the house site. So that matter has essentially been put to bed.
Okay, Kim, your hand was raised. Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say what Ron said. Can you hear me? No? Well. Try it again. Can you hear me now? No, can't hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. Say, just say what you were saying one more time. I probably was going to miss it. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, so what I was gonna say is, I was just gonna say what Ron said, that he submitted the letters, and, you know, so that's done.
Done with the alternative access approach. Can you mute Mr. Fisher, please? Please, thank you. All right, any other board members' comments, questions? Thoughts, Laura, anything? No, Dennis? Okay, all right. So then, let me get a, Ron, just remind us on what, what, I mean, it's just the general resolutions for approval at this point.
That's correct. You previously made a classified it as a type two C correction, so you included the environmental review, and you've addressed all procedural administrative issues previously, and now with the close of the public hearing, you're ready to authorize the preparation of an approval resolution.
All right, so can I get a motion for an approval resolution for the Golinchak application, please?
I'll make that motion.
First, second, anyone? Thank you, Dennis. All right, any comments, discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, next time we'll sign them, we'll, we'll, we'll sign them off, Adams. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil, Chairman of the Board, I have one request to the board. It's probably a common thing. We're approaching the northern long-eared bad habitat. I think it starts end of, end of March, last way, last day of March, we can't cut trees. So we would like to request permission to just accommodate tree clearing in order so that we can actually start the house this year. Otherwise, it was gonna, it's gonna set us back. It will be a very, a very short duration to cut trees. I don't know how that is, how that is accomplished, Ron.
Just the precedent of that.
The way that's accomplished is the board would issue a letter to the building inspector, saying that they have no problem with tree clearing in accordance with the submitted plans, that the plans are going to be approved at next, next month's meeting. And if the building inspector accepts that, which he generally does, really no reason not to, unless there's a problem determining the clear, tree clearing limits on the plans, then he could, Mr. Golinchak could proceed with his tree clearing. So if the board wants to approve that, I'll prepare a letter, and you can submit it to the building inspector.
Thank you.
Kim, go ahead.
Board hasn't approved it yet, so.
So we did that, we did that in Garrison last year. I, I don't have any problem with that. I would make the motion that we ask Steve to do that.
Okay, it's been moved, second. Second, Peter, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, good. All right, Adam, you got your, you got your, 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 your cutting.
Great, thanks, guys. Have a great evening.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, great. All right, let's move on to Shakespeare. So let me just say a couple of remarks before we get in. I want to thank the public, both on Zoom and in person. I thought we achieved two great examples of what happens with government. There was decorum, and there was patience, and I appreciate that. Okay, there was decorum, and there was patience, and I appreciate that. That goes a long way. I know there's emotions on, around the table on the topic, and it's great that we can actually have a civil substantive and fact-based conversation about what matters. Let me remind you what we're doing here. We are doing a SECRE review. That stands for the State Environmental Quality Review Act Regulation, Review Act. It's called Review Act. So we're evaluating the whether the environmental impact of this property has not been or has been sufficiently mitigated to the greatest extent practical. Environmental impact, as those of you who participated in some of the other meetings, we went through eighteen chapters in great detail over nine hours, point by point, about the environmental impact of this property. Details were discussed, thousands of pages were created of analysis, and detailed discussions were happened. We are not discussing whether we like Taming of the Shrew. We're not discussing whether people are fundamentally in love with theater. I think, as I said last time, and I've said in many meetings, this board, I don't want to speak for all my colleagues, but I'm pretty confident the seven of us in this board are supportive of Shakespeare and its mission and social action and value it brings to the community. That is not being discussed. What we're discussing is the environmental impact of the proposed plan. And let me state this, and I say this with, with great respect I have for, for Mr. Hollis, who is, I think, a very talented legal counsel. There was one thing stated last time. I, I tried to correct it, and then it appeared in the Putnam County News and Recorder, one of the two papers covering the topic. We are approving the entire project in terms of its SECRE review. We are not approving what is going to be done in phase one or phase two. We are approving the entire, the totality of the project. Every facet that's being proposed, doesn't matter what year it's going to be built, we are approving the environmental impact, one way or the other, positive or negative declaration. So we're not concerted this. positive or negative declaration. So we're not concerted this phase about only what they're proposing in one phase or another. We are proposing to assess the entire environmental impact. Doesn't matter if it happens in year twenty or year one. That is, we will approve in site plans different pieces, but we are approving from the secret perspective, the entire project. I want to clarify that because there were some, I think, different statements made last time, and I feel it's necessary, especially since it was in the media. Let me tell you how we're gonna do the rest of the evening. We had, what, twenty-five people left last time show? A little more. We had twenty-some-odd people who had asked to speak. You know, we would not know necessarily what side of the topic they were on, but we had twenty-five people remaining to speak, which is why we continue the public hearing. We're gonna ask and invite those people who did not get to speak last time, rough order as best we can, to share their views. We'll go back and forth between hybrid, uh, between Zoom and in person. We will allow other people to speak, of course, who have not spoken. And then if there's anyone who spoke last time and feels the need that they're being forced by God himself or herself to move to speak a second time, you're welcome to. We're gonna ask you to keep it short, and it has to be something new you're saying. We do not want to press repeat on the same comments. Trust me, we've got video, audio, and written transcripts of what everyone said last time. It does not need to be repeated. So that's the plan for tonight. Well, do you want to go in order of who? We'll start with Zoom, that's fine. So that's the plan for tonight. Any board members have any questions before we continue?
Did we queue up the next speaker? Did we try that last time? When you
I always say, I say
the speaker and then you say
Yeah, I say Crystal Ford followed by Daniel Sussman.
So they have a chance to sort it, so they know that they're
Yeah, they're ready. They're on deck. They're swinging the bat. They're ready. Okay, so, Cheryl, you want to call the name in the second, please?
Yeah, I'm just gonna see if they're there. Okay, so Carol Markan, followed by Meg Armstrong.
Carol? Yes, hi. Shall I just go ahead now?
Or is yours, Ms. Markan? Go ahead.
Okay. Well, good evening, Chairman Zuckerman and board and everybody. My name is Carol Markland. Uh, I've lived in Garrison within sight and sound of the Garrison Golf Course, and I've also been a strong supporter of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival for almost thirty years. I was president of the HVSF Board when we invested in the current tent. I've seen every single production at least once, and I'm still on the advisory board and continue to support them. I am also a strong supporter of the Phillips Town Comprehensive Plan and took part in the community charrette long ago at its inception. That community collaboration is also behind the recently updated comprehensive plan that in turn underpins our Phillips Town Open Space Index. The Garrison Golf Course is number ten on that list, and our zoning laws and overlay districts. Those laws and the number one goal of the comprehensive plan will have to be thrown out if this grand GGC HVS SF plan is to go forward. Instantly, I, Neil addressed various things that this hearing was not about, and we heard so many people talking about what this is not supposed to be about last time. But I also wanted to say that incidentally suburban-type housing over the golf course cannot be built without also throwing out current zoning. The two thousand and five PDD allows only, and I'm quoting, two single-family residential structures to be built on the entire two hundred-acre parcel of the existing golf course. And Chris Davis has also graciously spoken of donating the entire parcel in question to an environmental nonprofit if this plan fails for any reason. Yet we still had people last time, got this hearing, trying to scare us into believing that the festival plan, this large-scale plan is the only alternative to the development of pink boxes all over the landscape and acres of suburban-type housing. I just want to throw that red herring way out to sea. As Chairman Zuckerman pointed out on twenty-seventh of January hearing, this is not about how much we love HVSF. I think practically everybody does. And it's not about what they do. It's not about how much we trust HVSF. I would just note that a nonprofit board and employees can change its mission, can change its, you know, its board at any time. And there is nothing in HVSF's current mission about any kind of environmental or other stewardship. It's not about moving the existing tent and trailer port-to-porty operation from Bosco Bell up the road. I'm just repeating what Chairman Zuckerman said there. This hearing is supposed to be about something very different. The facts presented in the entire built-out plan, theaters, housing, hotel, everything, and its impact on the land, animals, and yes, on our community of this huge project as laid out in the environmental assessment form. I personally want HVSF to have a permanent home on the golf, golf course. I do also want its size, sighting, and consequent impact on this environment to be a negotiation between it and the Phillips Town Comprehensive Plan, a balance. We made our homes here because we wanted to live quiet rural lives, but we do acknowledge that inevitably compromises have to be made. I personally want HPS to have a permanent home on, on this golf course. I'm, I'm really definite about that. However, at the moment, the proposal seems to be a my-way or the highway plan. There's a great deal of money, six top-flight consultants, top lawyers on the, on the GGC HBF side. And this hearing is the first time that those with legitimate concerns about traffic, construction, water, noise, light, all those effects on our two thousand five hundred community, as highlighted in the EAF, have been able to be heard. We feel steamrolled by the often error-filled effort to market the proposal. Clearly hardly anyone has read the over-thousand-page EAF, let alone understand the impact of the full plan. This document is technical and huge because this plan development is vast. Chairman Zuckerman said at one point that this is perhaps the biggest development ever to come before him. At this point, I do want to thank the board and chairman, the planning board and the chairman, for all the many, many hours they've spent on this. It's heroic work. The planning board has consultants, AKRF, AKRF, to help them deal with the secret process. But AKRF does not live here and is not required to and has not consulted with local residents. We residents have no consultants to help us see what is incorrect in the EAF and what is concerning, what questions to ask. Nevertheless, we have many questions and concerns. And I'm speaking for some other people here, more retiring people who live around here also. For instance, why does the EAF say that, quote, "The subject property does not contain any unique topographic features"? It certainly does for Garrisonites around here, and most dislike the idea of the HVSF tent being perched on the highest contour and commanding for itself the best view around here, right up the river to iconic Storm King Mountain. Ironically, the site of the birth of the environmental movement. The plan cites the tent on a treeless hilltop where it will cause most sound and light pollution possible. Houses are situated three hundred and sixty degrees around above and below the golf course. Contrast this with Bosco Bell, where the tent was open to the river on a hundred and eighty degrees and screened by Bosco Bell House and Woods on much of the remaining sides. HVSF has promised not to use amplification at all while it's performing under a town temporary permit. But what if this full plan goes ahead? Are we never again to be treated to amplified musicals? Into the Woods was wonderful in two thousand and nineteen. Or the traditional and much-loved song and dance numbers in Shakespeare productions, no sound effects? Or will there be amplification? One of the recorders in the sound tests in the EAF reported that the sound would be over the town limit. What is the remediation for this, the mitigation? Trees are to be added to those already existing between the Chris, Chris Davis twenty-seven acres and the tent location. Incidentally, these will be at best twelve to fourteen foot high alone. How about some round the tent? A partial high-foot berm is proposed primarily to prevent traffic noise coming into the tent. The tent will be thirty-eight feet high. Sound rises, and the front of the tent is, of course, completely open. All the neighbors suffered through a series of bands, groups playing on the restaurant terrace at the Garrison a few years ago. It was only every Thursday for a few weeks in the summer, a couple of summers, I think, and finished promptly at eight thirty. We heard every word of every song. It was, was horrible. Thank goodness it was not. Seven performances a week until ten PM from June through October. Lights. Are there to be no lit scenes out the tent as in previous years? Is the audience to be stumbling around in the dark in the intermission on the lawns? Why can't the tent be sited and more of a bowl on the site, or nestled into the slope as we read in the newspapers early on could be done? There are plenty of great scenic backdrops apart from the one on the crest of the hill. We read in the EAF that weddings, et cetera, will be outside between four and six PM and inside after that. So some proximity to the banquetting rooms surely isn't a problem when the performances begin at seven thirty PM. Is there room for discussion or compromise? The treatment in the EAF of the doubling of the domestic water needed for the thousand flushes night discussed at the planning board meeting is of course of a concern also, as is the sinking of new wells, the digging of up to four huge septic fields, and the drawing of water when needed from the eastern basin up to Fort Defiance Hill. Well, that's troubling to our neighbors. Especially as so many had trouble with their wells when two newer irrigation wells were drilled to supplement pond water irrigation of the golf course in nineteen ninety-nine. Our well is drilled five hundred feet deep, two hundred feet below the highest point of the GGC in Rocky Nice. And we've had problems with recharge after dry winters and dry summers. Who will pay for remediation, including inconvenience of having no or sediment-filled water? Why is there no modern environmentally-friendly sewage treatment planned? The EAF posits that up to fifty acres of the ninety-seven-point-four acre site will be disturbed. A lot of construction noise and disturbance for people, birds, bees, and a lot of eco-fragmentation. Noise from the construction of this plan is likely to be loud. I'm quoting here from the EAF, especially if doors and windows are open, which ours are all summer. How can this be mitigated? How many summers will we have to shut ourselves inside? How about mitigation for the neighbors of the toxic gas caused by the building disturbance of the poisonous heavy metals we learned from the EAF are in the soil of the golf course? Mercury, lead, DTT, Claudine, and many more. How can you give a negative declaration when all the testing that's needed has not been done, except in three sites? What about the effects on wells, not just the wells on the golf course, which are mentioned, but on the lateral movement of contaminated water affecting neighbors' wells? Who will pay for that mitigation if needed? Will the runoff from ground disturbance cause the contamination of the brooks? There are many steep slopes there. I mean, really steep. We learn in the EAF about the contamination that
Could you start to summarize your remarks, please?
Okay. Um, but these are all important points related to the EAF, and you let people who are not talking about the EAF go on and on before. There's nothing in the EAF about how meadows will be achieved and managed. I mean, how else can we get these points out, except at this hearing? Three years' black plastic chemicals, roundup. Mugwort's already returning to the experimental meadow patch. Nothing about irrigation of three hundred newly planted trees, all the new shrubs. Nothing about management of the majority of the site will not be native meadows. Many seem not to understand the detrimental environmental impact that will occur on this site of the cars and feet of thousands of people, the scattering of a total of twenty new buildings, a total of fifty-six thousand square feet. Fifty-six thousand square feet is the equivalent of twenty-eight two thousand square foot new houses. And that's without counting the large thirty-eight-foot tent and all the existing buildings and a new twenty-room hotel and five large parking lots. This added to the light, the sound, the air pollution will all adversely impact until late at night the landscape, its environs, its birds, animals, insects, and yes, inhabitants of this community, its rural roads and Route Nine. Picture a Saturday with eight hundred attendees and employees arriving to picnic, watch a matinee, attend a wedding, and that's without a matinee in the inside theaters promised by HVSF, then leaving. Then thousand more people and cars arriving for picnics, dinner in the restaurant, bar, wedding, and evening performances in both theaters and arriving to work in these spaces, then all leaving again late that night. This is not Bosco Bell, where the single-tent theater was the only event happening in the summer. Never operated simultaneously with the house being open or a wedding. There was no restaurant, a bar, a hotel. This very, very large plan will be a huge disturbance for all those round, living around the golf course. Why can't there be some symbiosis between the existing buildings and the tent theater complex? The EAF shows many of the proposed new buildings to be operating only part of the year. There is so much unnecessary, underutilized space in this plan, using the existing banquet rooms or the beautiful spa room which are empty most weekend, weekdays for rehearsals, education events, instead of building a new rehearsal room, for instance. Why is nothing in this plan thought through with an item minimizing the number of people impacting the community at any one time? The profits from the for-profit side are apparently to be funneled to the nonprofit side. Why can't the for-profit and nonprofit arms work together to utilize space more efficiently? I'm in favor of some housing for artists, but twelve buildings totaling twenty-seven four, twenty-seven thousand four hundred square feet for a maximum of eighty-eight people and emptied for months so they can be let on a short-term Airbnb-type basis, when there is also a twenty-room hotel planned? What? There's nothing to prevent this huge plan being built out in its entirety once phase two is agreed in a couple of years, if the money is available. And I understand a great deal of dollars have already been pledged. This community is quiet and retiring. We chose to make our homes in the woods rather than in the village. Change will come, but it hasn't happened to be on this huge scale, and with so many unknown and possibly unintended consequences. A regional arts destination in the middle of this woodsy community will change our beloved home utterly. A quote from the EAF here, "It is the applicant's, it is the applicant's position that the proposed development is of a scale and character that is complementary to the existing and natural environs. I, along with so many of my neighbors, beg to differ. I'm asking for a positive declaration and some real community input. Thank you for letting me go on, but it's the only chance we get. Thank you."
Oh, man, I am engaged. I promise you, I am engaged. Sorry, someone on Zoom having a comment. So, uh, let's continue.
Thomas Pearson, followed by Chip Lowinson.
Hi, I'm Thomas Pearson. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you for, thank you for continuing this opportunity, continuing to give us this opportunity to speak. My name's Thomas Pearson, um, and I live in the village of Cold Spring with my family. My wife Martha and I have one child in elementary school at Haldane and another in preschool at the Foundry Montessori School here in the village. And I'm here because I support HVSF in general, and I support these plans specifically. Martha and I chose to live and raise our family here precisely because of its unique combination of natural beauty, its access to nature, its deep sensitivity for land conservation and the way that we all benefit from thoughtful, smart land use. We also are very much in favor of the engaged, active, warm community that we all have, the sense of community participation, the sense of engagement that we all are bringing to this process. The schools, the other opportunities for children, and yes, the cultural and the creative opportunities that are unique to this area and that are a really important part of what makes this and that are a really important part of what makes this area special. And I think, uh, I think this project really amplifies all of these qualities. It really, it is a thoughtful, proactive way to preserve a huge swath of land. Um, I do think it is engaging with the community in a very proactive way. I think it creates more opportunities throughout the year for us, for for a wider number of people, a more uh, diverse number of people to enjoy this specific land, to participate culturally, to participate in the, uh, to participate in the in the use of the land itself.
Does the environmental impact of this program, not not whether it's good for so society? I mean, you're happy to comment that, but we're trying to focus on the environmental impact.
I understand. I appreciate that. And I, and I think my understanding and I think the understanding that's that a lot of us have is that the current use of the golf course, uh, the historic use of this golf course is in, has an incredibly negative environmental impact. And this plan remediates that use and it thoughtfully takes the land out of the, a potential, potentially more serious development. I I will also say I'm here, and I know this is slightly off of the environmental issue, but I think it's important to say I'm here not just as a resident of Phillips Town, as a resident of Cold Spring, but as a leader of a peer arts organization called New York Stage and Film. I'm the executive director. We partner with various organizations in the Hudson Valley as well as in New York City uh, to produce and develop theater, film, and television to support the artists that create them. We've, we work with Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. We know Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival from a, from a peer perspective, and I can speak to their to their expansive impact as an arts organization and I think to us as smart stewards of of assets. They have important local impact, but they also have impact in the theater ecosystem more broadly. Um, and I think they, I think the Phillips Town should do everything it can within the bounds of the environmental concerns that we're discussing here to to make, to make sure that they have a home here long term. And I think the issues that we're talking about in terms of access, in terms of noise pollution, in terms of light pollution, in terms of uh, construction issues are absolutely issues that need to be uh, you know, taken into consideration. But I think the ultimate use of this land uh, in the way that they've proposed is to the benefit of the, this community and to the benefit of, yes, the the wider Hudson Valley. I've known Davis McCallum for almost twenty years. I've known Katie Lee for a shorter period of time, but um, I think it's notable that I met her not in an industry setting, but at the Tots Park in Cold Spring. These are people that live here. They're people that uh, will be responsible stewards for this uh, incredible gift and this opportunity. So, again, I I I appreciate the time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, and I will turn back the mic, but I will say, um, I I really hope that the planning board and Phillips Town as a whole can can embrace this project and can embrace this opportunity that we all have uh, to thoughtfully, responsibly, and in an engaged way conserve this land and make a home for an impactful local arts organization and employer. Thanks very much.
We, we, we're, uh, we got two speakers for twenty five minutes, folks. I'd love to just get a little bit of a pace going here if people wouldn't mind. Regardless of what your perspective is, let's just try and not repeat things that everyone has said and focus on the environmental impact. Cheryl?
Chip Lowenson, followed by Celia Barber.
Chip, floor is yours. Oh, Peter, Peter, go, hold on, please.
Can I just ask people to stand up when they speak and to project? You know, behind masks, and I'd like to hear really what people say without a little too much garble in there. So, uh, so if you do that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Peter. Chip, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. And, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My family's had a home in Garrison for fourteen years. And for full disclosure, I'm a member of the board of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. And like many members of the board, I've been on the board for a long time, in in my case, twelve years. And I'll limit my remarks tonight to just one subpart of just one issue that received a lot of attention at the last meeting. And my one point is that steady, significant traffic from plays under the tent will be exceedingly rare. A a number of speakers said at the last meeting that the property will have a thousand to two thousand visitors per day, six days a week. And I was puzzled about the source of those projections. But here are the facts. As as a part of the traffic study, H B S F was required to present information for the worst case scenario, the worst case scenario. And it was if, and it's a big if, every single space on site in the thirty year plan was at full capacity. So that means sold out shows at the tent theater and the indoor venue and a two hundred person wedding and a packed restaurant with non-theatergoers and staff on site to support all of this. But how often will all of these things happen at once? The answer is never. H B S F has submitted traffic management plans committing to that fact. And even the total number of people in this impossible scenario was just eleven hundred people. It's not the thousand to two thousand uh, that we've heard, and it's certainly not six days a week. So i- if we focus not on the theoretical maximum that won't occur, but just what we can expect in the, in the real world. I will want to discuss both the arriving and departing traffic. Arriving traffic's not an issue. It's spread out over about two and a half hours before a show because some people picnic. Some people will have dinner at the restaurant. And human nature being what it is, people arrive for plays at varying times, just like different people arrive at very different times for airline flights. But for departing traffic, for how many nights will this be an issue? Long experience has shown that alas, sorry to say, not every show sells out or even comes close to selling out. Um, June has tended to be lighter and even in July and August, there are sellouts or even close to sellouts only on Friday and Saturday nights. So that's weekend nights in July and August, that's eight nights a year. If you want to be conservative, add fifty percent of that, call it twelve nights a year. Um, and departing traffic is steady for at most half an hour after the end of a show, based on experience at Bosco Bell is more like fifteen minutes at the end of a show. And keep in mind that the tent will have a slightly smaller capacity than the current tent at Bosco Bell. And there will be two exits compared to the the current one exit at Bosco Bell. So from a sellout or near sellout at the tent, at most there will be a half an hour a night of steady traffic for twelve nights. That comes to six hours a year. And for twenty four hours a day, three hundred sixty five days a year, that's eight thousand seven hundred sixty hours in a year. And I, I don't want anyone to think that I just did that math in my head. I needed a calculator before the meeting. But with eight thousand seven hundred sixty hours in a year, that's less than zero point zero seven percent of the time. That's zero point zero seven percent. There'll be steady traffic from a sellout or a near sellout at the tent. Of course, on lighter attendance nights, there'll be departing traffic, but lighter attendance means lighter traffic. And since D O T has approved the need for a traffic light at that difficult intersection at the corner of Route Nine and Snake Hill Road that so many people spoke about at the last meeting, the exiting traffic should be safe and manageable. Um, I know the secret review process and companies, other environmental issues in a diff, in addition to traffic. Um, and I focused on just one particular aspect of traffic, which is addressed in all, in a much more comprehensive fashion in the traffic study. Just finally, I I know many of our neighbors have raised heartfelt concerns about the project. I I get it. Um, the board of the Shakespeare Festival gets it. Uh, the Shakespeare Festival has taken extensive steps and devoted time and resources to mitigate the various environmental impacts, whether it's traffic that I talked about or light or sound or water or wise use of open space. And the Shakespeare Festival will continue to do so. The festival has been a collaborative partner with the town and many neighbors to ensure that every concern is addressed. And the Shakespeare Festival will continue to do so. And thank you for your time and attention.
Mr. Zuckerman?
Sorry?
It's, uh, it's Stan Hollis. May I chime in for just one second? I've had communication.
Sorry, Dan, that's not what, unless you, what, really?
What, what I'm gonna say will be helpful, your, uh, Mr. Chairman, I promise. What the Shakespeare leadership would like to do is have our supporters not speak since we want to get through the people who are, uh, speaking either neutrally or in opposition to our project. That's what I wanted to say to the people that can hear me on Zoom and in person.
Communicate however you want with your supporters, but let's, please not use the public airwaves to to do that. Go ahead, like people, whoever wants to speak and speak, if you guys convince people not to speak, that's up to you guys. So whoever's out there is up to speak and they don't have to speak if they don't want to. Who's next?
Celia Barber, followed by Kyle Good.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Barber.
Hi, my name is Celia Barber. And I have lived with my family in Garrison for roughly twenty years, but not adjacent to the golf course. I am disheartened, like a lot of you, by how polarized this debate has become. It seems like a sort of a solid up or down vote, either you're totally for it or totally against it. However, like almost everyone I know, um, I fundamentally support the idea of H B S F occupying the Garrison Golf Course site. I trust Davis and the Shakespeare team, but trust is not carte blanche. Because like us, also like everyone I've talked to about this project over the past year, I have misgivings about certain details. I am going to voice just one of them. The tent and its outbuildings should not be sighted on top of the ridge. The breathtaking wide open views from the ridge line have been a gift to everyone who lives in this re, region and frankly, to everyone who passes by it online. Like many friends and acquaintances, I find the proposed sighting of the permanent tent aggressive and overbearing. To build a large permanent structure on such a high impact spot prioritizes a sense of spectacle over deeper community and environmental values. All of us who live in Phillips Town are not just beneficiaries, but also stewards of the aesthetic majesty of the region that we inhabit. I also want to add that I know a lot of people who won't speak out about their particular misgivings because they don't want to be difficult or they don't want to stick their heads above the parapet, as more of them put it, or alienate their neighbors and allies. Or because on balance, they think it's probably a good thing that Shakespeare goes ahead. I felt compelled to share my thoughts, both for my own sake and for many of them who are not speaking out because they don't think that their small individual and particular concerns are of merit. Thank you. I appreciate your patience with all of us so much.
And thank you, Ms. Barber, for both of your thoughts and your brevity. Excuse me? Okay, next.
Ned Whitney.
This will be the last one we're gonna take from Zoom and we'll do in some in person. Go ahead. Whitney, go ahead.
Hi, thanks for hearing me. My name is Ned Whitney. I've been a resident of Phillips Town for forty three years. And I've been a member of the board of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival for the past seven years. I'm also a member, board member of several other local organizations. Uh, and I am a supporter of this project, but uh, in deference to others, I will make my comments very brief. All I'd like to say is that I really appreciate the efforts that the planning board has taken in reviewing this project. It's a real tribute to democracy at action. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Uh, who is in, who are first in person? Ms. Wallace, are you here? Well, Mr. Wallace, you've already spoken last time, so. Sarah, we, we appreciate you coming to speak. I mean, I really don't want to create a precedent of having spouse speak for spouse already having spoken. Do you want to take a moment? We'll come back to you?
Yeah.
All right, you're gonna be great. Don't worry about it. All right, next.
Mark Menting.
Mr. Menting, followed by Ms. Krakauer. Yeah.
Dan Murray.
Alex Tripp.
Trip and followed by.
This work? Yep. My name's Alex Tripp. Uh, my family and I live on Snake Hill Road, just below what I think is being described.
You hear him? Yes.
Uh, we live on Snake Hill Road, just below what's been described as, I believe, the overflow parking lot. And, um, we have been to many, many of the, uh, Shakespeare Festival productions over the years. Uh, we're longtime supporters. Uh, but from listening to these descriptions of, uh, by the supporters of what the project is, one would think that this is just a matter of Bosco Bell on the hill, of nestling, uh, a stage into the hillside and and actors wandering through the wildflower meadows and reclining in the long grass at twilight, reciting Elizabethan couplets. This is a sprawling real estate development. Uh, this is, uh, uh, as Ms. Markwan laid out, a a vast array of buildings. It's a, it's a whole Shakespeareapalooza on the hill and it's, uh, taking what is effectively an undeveloped parcel. I mean, technically, there is development, but it's, uh, taking an undeveloped parcel and turning it into was effectively a, uh, a suburban industrial park for the local facilities of the Shakespeare culture industry with all of the characteristics of a suburban industrial park. The, the prominent location, the sweeping drive, the ample but discreet parking, the pastoral location, but without one key component, adequate transportation. You, you, you build a suburban industrial park by the Cross Rochester Expressway, by Route one twenty eight, by the Bay Shore Freeway. You don't build it on a two lane country road. I mean, it's a state highway, but it's a state highway on a two lane country road. And it's, uh, at a bottleneck where the passing lanes narrow down, where there are two hills, a large curve. It's a, uh, it's a treacherous corner and there's no simple solution, putting a traffic officer there, putting a traffic light there is just gonna back up the traffic. It's gonna cause noise problems. How many grandmothers and Lexuses are gonna be sacrificed for this project? It's, uh, you know, we've seen the caravan coming out at night and, uh, they're going to be trying to mar, merge into the traffic on Route Nine. And their heads are gonna be spinning with Blank verse and Chardonnay and the, uh, John Rodak won't catch a break in either goal of the fire department. And, uh, there's no simple solution, although as, uh, John Benjamin pointed out, there is a solution uh, in his lament for the disappearance of rural Garrison. He pointed out that we are the bottleneck between these great four lane slabs extending into Duchess and Westchester. And, uh, these, these pincers, um, are pointing towards us and this environmentally sensitive suburban industrial park may be just the reason that the D O T needs to finish the job, to close the pincers, to put a four lane highway through. But, you know, until that happy day when we're blessed with a four lane highway through the countryside, this is gonna remain a very dangerous intersection. And you, um, we've heard the, the, the great and the good supporting this project, uh, from a distance. You know, I I suspect that if, uh, their, their views might be moderated if, uh, they were living in Stephen Wallace's house. But the, um, the danger of this intersection is easy to underestimate. If you don't have to scurry across it in the face of this oncoming traffic barreling down towards you, if you don't see the wreckage on the shoulder of the road, if you don't know people who've been injured in accidents there, if you just come by occasionally, maybe you're one of the people who's barreling by and barely notices the intersection. Maybe you come to a theatrical production and it'll be a minor inconvenience to be backed up at the turn. If you're T-boned by a semi, the inconvenience won't be so minor. So the standard of, the threshold for a sequel review is very low. It's intentionally very low. And the single potential adverse environmental impact is sufficient to trigger a positive determination. So this is being presented as a environmentally sensitive project, but of course it is because suburban industrial parks have this pastoral image as an essential component. It's that, you know, the Shakespeare brand is strong. It's very edifying and uplifting, but it doesn't change what it is. It is a multi-venue entertainment complex in a suburban industrial park. And it's the wrong location for it. If it were within walking distance of public transportation, of restaurants, of shops, it would make a lot more sense. In fact, if it were closer to Bosco Bell, it would make a lot more sense if there were an appropriate parcel. But we don't need to put people into their cars to drive to a location that is inaccessible except by automobile. I mean, that is an anachronism of the mid-20th century suburban industrial park. You know, this is a Shakespeare Festival. We don't need to make it a celebration of the automobile. So for these two reasons, the transformation of the landscape into a suburban industrial park and the additional traffic on an already overburdened Route 9 intersection. I mean, the board is aware of the problems with Route 9. For those two reasons, a positive deflation should be issued. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. So Mike McKee's on Zoom. All right, let's, all right, all right, all right, come on, come on, come on. Let's not, let's keep that aside, please. Mr. McKee's on Zooms. We'll come, we'll come back to Zoom, Mike, we'll get to you. Let's keep going. Anyone in person here?
Liz Campbell Kelly. Jamie Copeland.
Liz Campbell Kelly. Just give it a second time.
Jamie Copeland. Timothy Nolan. He's going to be late. Okay. Madeline Julian. Marcy Fisher.
Please come up to the mic, because no one, the 112 attendees on Zoom wouldn't be able to hear you.
Okay, oh, good. Thank you. Okay. First, I wanted to say thank you to all of you in the board, Chairman Zuckerman and everyone. It's, I, we started reading through the amount of information that's there. I don't know how you got through it. It's a lot to digest. My name is Marcy Fisher. I was born right here at Butterfield Hospital, when there was still a hospital here. And throughout my life, wherever I went, I always wanted to come back. And so now I've been living in Garrison, my husband and I have been living in Garrison for 19 years. It's a dream come true for us. We moved here for the landscape, the arts, and for a community that cares deeply about each other and our environment. We are very concerned about the impact of this complex and the impact it'll have on us and our neighbors' quality of life. I'm just going to list out some of our biggest concerns, some which there may be more answers to that we haven't discovered yet, but I'd like to just take you through what our biggest concerns are. First is the traffic. I know a lot of people have already talked about that. But the traffic on Snake Hill, for living here for 19 years, I just, I don't see how, and I can't understand how it's going to handle that many people. And for the Shakespeare people, I think it's great, but odd that you would say that you're not going to be successfully packed if you're not going to be a full house. I find it hard to understand why you'd want to build out that far, but it's another question. On Route 9, we are concerned, and the gentleman before me just said that with widening Route 9 in Garrison and the installation of the traffic light at Snake Hill. I live on Coleman. I can tell you how impossible it is to exit Coleman onto 9 any day. It's very difficult, no matter what time of day it is. I miss a number of trains to try and commute to work based on the wait. So I don't, I don't see how that's going to be mitigated or any slower with the addition of the additional 1,000 to 2,000 people as it states in the EAF. And the parking on Route 9 is a possibility. For any of us that have lived in this area, we know the breakneck meets Bear Mountain problem that we see. We see it all summer. It's wonderful. We all love this area, but people park up and down. You can't even drive. So I don't know what that's going to look like on Route 9 and on Snake Hill. And which leads me to all of us that live on Coleman, Fraser, Snake Hill, and all of the surrounding roads. Are, is Coleman going to become, and Fraser and Phillips Brook going to become a thoroughfare? Are people going to try to jump the traffic and, you know, speed through? I mean, there's children, there's people's pets, there's wildlife. It's all the reasons we love to be here. That scares me a bit. And also, are these going to now become, you know, a speed trap? But also, what's going to happen to our mailboxes? What's going to happen to our packages? Are people going to be just parking up and down? That is a possibility. I know there's ample parking. However, people like to take shortcuts. So no one wants to wait in line to exit. No one wants to wait in line to go in. So if there are local roads, it's going to be easy to park there and just cross the street, which, by the way, means crossing Route 9. That's going to be really dangerous. And then public access, I haven't been able to understand. So it would be really helpful if we could find that somewhere, or someone else might be able to share what the public access is going to look like. Will the, that front nine look like it looks at Bear Mountain on any weekend, where it's very, very crowded, unless there's going to be someone that's, you know, monitoring that or keeping that at bay? I think that could be dangerous for all of us. I'm concerned about the noise pollution. So there will be additional noise, especially with additional traffic, especially if we add a traffic light. So that, that concerns me, concerns my husband. The air pollution also. So now we're increasing the traffic, and now we want to add a stoplight. So we're going to have trucks, we're going to have more cars, and there's going to be air pollution that's there. It's going to seep into, seep into the earth. It's not going to be great. And we're also going to see more of that with the construction. And I know this is going to be a phased construction if the full build-out happens, which I'm hoping it doesn't. Obviously, you can tell. But the construction, the construction vehicles and the noise from the construction is also going to be really devastating to anyone that lives in the area and any of the wildlife that lives in the area. The light pollution, someone else had mentioned, I think that's also going to be quite, quite a challenge for us. I haven't seen any of the studies that talk about how it disrupts the ecosystem and how it disrupts any animals that are doing what they do at night and any of the bird species that migrate or hunt. Everyone's going to be thrown off by that. I am concerned about the water table insufficiency. I know someone else spoke about that earlier. I'm also concerned about taxes. So I know this is environmental, and I understand that. But part of the support to build out and part of the support from fire, police, everyone, how is that going to affect us? Is it going to affect Cold Spring? Probably not. It's probably going to take, everybody in Garrison is probably going to take the hit on the increase in taxes that are going to be needed to support that. I'm trying to also understand, is there a failure bond clause written into the proposal? So what happens if it's a failure? Who's going to pay to remove the structures? What will happen to the cabins? Are they going to become low-income housing? I don't know. Is there any data that exists that is going to tell us all of the answers to these questions? I'm trying. I'm looking through the EAF. Again, amazing work and amazing that everyone who has done that research. It's really wonderful. And then just a few other questions. I know we've all heard and talked about how HWSF has been great stewards of the land and is going to be amazing at the GGC. It's just that, I believe, at Bosco Bell, they weren't stewards of Bosco Bell. They were guests at Bosco Bell. So I think, to think that it's going to be an easy transition, this is a lot of land. It's 20-plus buildings, and I think it's quite a huge initiative and an undertaking for a group that doesn't usually do that. So those are a few of my concerns. And I thank you so much for listening, and thank you for going through all of the documents that you guys have been going through so thoroughly.
All right, so what's we have in person?
Ma'am?
Thank you. I'm Joseph Mann. My wife and I live on, off of 403 in Garrison. And I've been a member of the board and we support the Shakespeare Festival.
Sir, it is a little hard to hear the bathroom.
I would gladly pick on it. My unveiling.
Civil disobedience is fun. Civil disobedience is fun. Let's go, keep going. Okay.
So Joseph Mann, and my wife Libby Anderson and I live on Fox Hollow Lane, just off of 403. And I have been a member of the board and we are supporters of Hudson Valley Shakespeare, in all fair disclosure. And I appreciate the focus of the hearing tonight on the environmental issues, to the point that I almost was going to say nothing and pass, but clearly, the traffic is part of all of this, and so we should talk about the traffic. And I think Chip Lowenstein made a very good point as to what the actual level of the traffic is. And I think we have to really focus on what we know and what we don't know. And one of the things that's very true about this proposal is that, you know, we already have traffic at Bosco Bell, and they're talking about a facility that's going to be smaller, and so that we're going to actually have less traffic. And Chip went through those numbers, right? And then I think the next question you have to ask is, well, where does this traffic go? I mean, think about it. So you have, traffic heads north out of 9D, right? It goes up the Beacon or to 84, or it goes out 301 to 9, or it goes out 301 to the Deconic, or it goes out to the west-east side of the county. And then you have traffic that heads south. The traffic that heads south goes down 9D, and then it goes down 403, but most of it, to 9, to go down south to Westchester. Some of it might continue down 9D to go across the Bear Mountain Bridge and over to the other side of the river. So, you know, when you look at this proposal in terms of what we really know, what we're talking about is less traffic that's closer to where it needs to be, which is Route 9. I mean, the traffic is already on Route 9. And I think that Chip has actually pointed out that, well, the amount of traffic will actually be less because, you know, there are going to be less visitors. And the other thing that we also know is that we already have a facility there. They already do weddings at the facility, and so you're not really, in the first instance, talking about adding much traffic here. What you're really talking about is getting the traffic close to where it's going. And nobody's talking about putting traffic onto Travis Corner Road. And nobody's talking about putting traffic onto Phillips Brook Road. I mean, if you think about these dynamics, right? One of the things we know about Phillips Town is that we have a lot of substandard roads. Why? We have substandard roads because a lot of these roads were laid out before we had standards. Roads were laid out before we had cars, right? So we have bad grades. We have lousy sightlines and what have you. And one of the really bad areas is where Snake Hill Road intersects on one side, 9, and Travis Hill Road intersects it on the other side. Well, here we have an opportunity to fix a problem. You know, people know that it's a death trap, and shame on us if we don't fix our problems. And then think about Phillips Brook Road, right? You know what the easiest way to avoid the death trap of that intersection is? To cross 9D by going down Phillips Brook Road. So if you want a positive environmental impact, fix the intersection and get the traffic off of Phillips Brook Road. I mean, you know, it's kind of obvious. So anyway. So the other thing that is, seems to be a concern here are the taxes, right? And we're talking about creating, you know, taking what is already a public amenity and turning it into a different kind of a public amenity, where you have basically a lot of parkland. And you also have some economic activity going on that's just going on in a different area, right? And, you know, ultimately, you know, when you go to similar facilities in the area, right? And you see, you know, what does it look like in terms of the neighborhood that surrounds these places? For instance, down in Westchester, right? Well, actually, the neighborhoods are pretty well-kept, and it actually improves property values. And, you know, these properties actually become more attractive in their own way. And, you know, clearly, people need to be considerate of neighbors. You know, you need to be considerate of neighbors in terms of ingress and egress and make sure that you don't burden anybody's property in particular and be considerate of neighbors in terms of noise and light and what have you. But, you know, that's all manageable issues, right? And one of the things that I think is really impressive is the wide variety of people who've come here to speak. You know, and it's almost like a mini Spoon River anthology when everybody gets up here and they talk about their.
The ad hominem attacks.
That's not ad hominem.
You're starting to get there, so just let's watch that part.
That's actually a compliment.
Okay.
But what's so impressive is how many people have come here and said, "I live in Phillips Town. I pay taxes because I like the arts and I like nature." Well, if you look at this project, what this project is about is the things that people come to Phillips Town to enjoy. This project actually supports our tax base. And not only does it support our tax base, but, you know, there are lots of us who are in town who actually go beyond the tax base, and we actually support this project as a matter of civic improvement, which is one of the greatest American traditions that we've ever had. This is what America is about. You know, going back to what Alexis de Tocqueville described in Democracy in America. So we are here to make our community better, and we're here to make our community better by realizing this kind of a project. So I hope you have our backs on this. Thank you very much.
Okay. Who's left in the room?
Crystal Ford, followed by Susan Coleman.
Hello, this is my first time speaking for the planning board. So if you don't know me, I'm all about the climate. And I've been asked my opinion, how does the Shakespeare project impact the climate? And I'm actually really thrilled that people are asking these questions because we should ask that of every single thing that is built in the community. I'm talking single-family homes. I'm talking conservation subdivisions. I'm talking industrial. We need to be asking the questions, how do they plan to heat their buildings? Are they going to be insulated? Are they going to be clearing trees and then replacing those trees? These are the questions we should be asking, but we actually don't have any mechanisms to enforce it. So, but please keep asking the questions. And myself, I've actually had several conversations with Shakespeare over the years about their plans in my capacity as the climate smart coordinator. So we've talked about EV charging on-site, shuttles to the site to decrease traffic. We've talked about putting a repair cafe. We've talked about them doing their own carbon footprint analysis. And I'd also, to be clear, if they were to say we were going to clear-cut a forest to build this, I'd be dead set against this project. But we're taking a degraded piece of property that has been basically pumped with chemicals for the last however many years, and we are transforming it. And it is my understanding that they plan to go for LEED Platinum Campus Certification, which is a more comprehensive and stringent than LED LEED Platinum, as it also takes into account landscape and ecology. And it's, the project is envisioned as a model for environmental sustainability in the performing arts nationwide. And just so you don't, if you don't know what LEED is, the goal of LEED is to create better buildings that reduce contribution to global climate change, protect and restore. contribution to global climate change, protect and restore water resources, protect and enhance biodiversity and ecosystems, promote sustainable and regenerative material cycles and enhance community of life. So if this is what they're striving for, then I think we can, you know, believe that their heart is in the right place. I've lived here for 13 years. I trust Shakespeare to be a good neighbor. I think they have the best intentions, but I also want to encourage everyone to keep fighting for the climate and for environment and ask the questions and hold people accountable, the schools, the government, nonprofits, business, because we all have to do this together. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ford.
Susan Coleman followed by Luke Hilfer.
Well, Luke's new, right? So I was, I wanted to just make sure we get Ms. Wallace's shot and is Mr. Davis going to speak? He was signed up last time. So, all right, ma'am, please state your name and go ahead.
My name is Susan Coleman and I live at 40 Travis Corners Road, which is just east of the golf course on 38 acres of conserved land. I've lived there with my family since 1996. I also want to thank you all. I can't believe what you have to go through with all this. So thank you for your service. I also want to thank Chris Davis, who's been a lovely neighbor of mine for a long time. And I also want to thank my friends and neighbors in this community who in spite of day jobs have consistently taken on David and Goliath struggles since the 1960s that have preserved the landscape that we all love and care about and have given momentum to the struggles to preserve the environment worldwide. You are the reason that Storm King doesn't have a big power plant on it, that Garrison Institute is not a sprawling development and, and so much more. I want to take a stand for there is huge common ground here. You know, this, I think this sometimes there's been a like, I'm for Shakespeare, I'm against, da, 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 da. I think that kind of thinking, which is, it's gotten a little more refined now, but it can make us really stupid about this. We are neighbors, we are friends to a very great extent. I would, I don't know, but I would guess that 90% of us come here because we value nature, the real character of the place that is low key. We didn't come here because it was cheap. We didn't come here because it was convenient. We came here for the rural character and the way of life that it creates for us and for our families. Where a lot of us are creators, we're lovers of the arts, music, beauty. So there's just a lot of common ground. And it's not about whether or not we support Shakespeare. Way too simplistic and polarized power struggles are, will get us off the refinement that we need to really look at this. You know, there's an opportunity here and I think conflict, I've been, I've been doing conflict stuff around the world for 30 years. And it's sort of, maybe it's equipped, but you know, there's crisis and opportunity out of conflict, but it really helps you create something new and better. And I think it can make us closer as a community. It can show us our best. It can also show us our worst. But out of the controversy, something good can emerge. And I appreciate that Shakespeare has been listening and I hope that the controversy will create perhaps a lotus flower out of the muck. If we put our minds together and if we also work together, we keep it from being a monstrosity. Because I, I think a lot of the, the stuff that people have been talking about, that Carol talks about is really frightening. Some of the things, stuff that could happen. So I appreciate what Shakespeare has done to raise money for land remediation. I appreciate that they genuinely seem to want to be good stewards of the land. Although I think, and I hope that isn't presumptuous, but I've been living here for a long time. It takes a long time to be a good steward of the land. I can tell you, I mean, I, I'm learning something every day about what an invasive species means and all of that. I also appreciate Chris giving the land to the land trust and rewilding it. That's really awesome. So the question is how to go forward with this in a way that makes really good sense and that doesn't irreparably alter the community that we all really love. I've said to Davis from the, Davis McCallum, from the beginning, you know, the devil about this is in the details. And the details are complicated. They are complicated. And honestly, I don't have time to be going through all that stuff. I don't, it's, so I rely on the planning board and I rely on my neighbors and I rely on the goodwill of Shakespeare. You know, I think we need to move slowly. I would rather there be a positive declaration just because, I'm sure Shakespeare doesn't want that. And I don't want to get into the yes, no, whatever. But I, I know for myself that when I, things are complicated and I slow down, I don't make mistakes. And we don't want to make mistakes here. So I don't want us to move too fast with something that's as massive as this or potentially massive as this. I, I hope we will really keep our eyes on the unintended consequences. It's so hard to know, but what's the tipping point of unwanted urban suburban sprawl? What's the tipping point of Route nine? I'm so grateful that you're all paying attention to this. I know you don't have control over the state, but, you know, the increased traffic, the increased number of people, all the stuff that we all came here to escape. And I know Fred Rich, who's really been a big, you know, supporter of a lot of the, the, you know, a lot of the ideas behind this really believes that this isn't going to get out of hand. I hope he's right. I think it will take everyone's vigilance to make sure that's true. And especially Shakespeare, Chris, Fred, the planning board, all of, all of you. I don't need to say it's not, we're not just moving the tent over from Bosco Bell. So specific concerns that I have, because I live uphill from the golf course in what the water study calls the upland basin contributing to the site groundwater. When I read that, it's like, oh geez, this sounds really scary. I don't want my well to go dry. I know, I know my neighbor's well went dry the last time Shakespeare did something. I live in one of the, I, maybe the biggest wetland in Garrison. I don't want that water table to go down. I'm not, I don't, this is above my pay grade. I don't understand this stuff, but I understand that I am squarely in that upland basin contributing to site groundwater region. So I don't know what that means, but I don't want those things to happen. I, I don't want my well to go dry and I don't want the water to be depleted. So I'm counting on you, the planning board, I'm counting on Shakespeare to be looking out for us on these things. Cause that really obviously affects the quality of life and our property values and everything. The, the peace and quiet. When I, I, when I came here with my family a long time ago now, my greatest litmus test was, is it quiet? I sat every property we looked at around here, I sat there and listened. And ours was really quiet and I, and it still is quiet. But I don't know with Route nine and everything, I, it's, and, and the traffic light, I hate the traffic light. I hate the fact that we're going to create a more of a Robert Moses effect. I understand that, you know, I'll defer to all of your common sense about this, if that's the thing. But I don't necessarily think it's going to keep me safer. I think it's going to create more noise congestion. So the rural character, you know, I keep singing that Joni Mitchell song about paving paradise and putting up a parking lot. You know, I, maybe I'm old school, but I'm just sorry that we have to keep building and building and building. You know, it's, it's like humans, we just can't seem to stop. So, you know, the traffic and congestion, I hope it's really going to be looked at carefully and thoughtfully. It sounds, I think that people are trying to do this. I really hope that you will. Snake Hill Road, my son, my 26 year old son has traveled the entire US multiple times, up and down to Alaska, across the lower 48. And he still maintains that Snake Hill Road is one of the prettiest roads in the country. I hope we can maintain that Shakespeare, I hope you don't wreck it. It's a really beautiful road. I love it every day that I drive it. Taxes, I, I, I think that Katie and Davis said to me, reassured me that this process wouldn't affect, wouldn't put the tax burden on us. You maybe don't remember saying that, but I think, and now of course you probably, it's not yours to reassure us. But, but I'll be pissed off if I'm having to pay for this project. I'll be really pissed off. It will seem very unfair in addition to all the disruption. If you create a gathering for the community, wonderful. That would be lovely if it's not just based on ticket holders. The tent, that's your karma. I think it's, you know, that's really bad karma, but I, I just whatever. I, I know many, many, many people are upset about that. I, I personally haven't taken that on, but a lot of people find that a real affront. I'm going to end with leadership about carbon neutrality. I don't need to say to everybody here that we are in an existential climate crisis. You know, if we, if we zoomed up out of the stratosphere and we looked down on where we are, we are in one of the, we are a point of green in one of the most privileged places on this planet. And I, I appreciate Crystal's work around climate. I agree that we should not do anything without thinking about our carbon footprint. I haven't heard a lot about carbon footprint and maybe I've missed it. I've heard a lot about the meadows. The meadows are really nice, but it's a little bit of smoke and mirrors. I think it's also maybe a pipe dream. You might do good with the meadows, but what would be much more significant was if this project was really modeling, trying to move forward with carbon neutrality, trying to model what it looks like to be a, to build something in the 21st century. And, you know, I know it's easy for me to talk about spending other people's money, although it may not be more expensive. I imagine the state has all. Okay, okay. So I would just, that would be a lot more meaningful. But I will say also on that front, this has been such a frustrating process for those of us that are really directly impacted by this. My whole life is being impacted by this. It's taken a ton of my time and everything else. So I am, I do appreciate speaking because this is a big deal for me and my family. So I would like to challenge you, all of us, to raise the bar on this as much as possible to show what a development like this can be for the 21st century. I know that Chris and Fred and the board would like to make this high quality. I would look forward to it being as high quality as it can be. A jewel, not an eyesore, an aggravation, a sprawl, a model of green leadership, a carbon neutrality with the softest possible footprint, a model for other places to emulate that preserves the rural character that we all love and that I know that the Shakespeare brand depends on, that preserves natural beauty, our low key nature that's in scale. So that the end of the day, when all the dust has settled around this, that Shakespeare, you can make us proud and all of us will give you a standing ovation.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. All right, we have one more in the room. I will, I will continue to ask people for brevity. This is, we're going to go till 10:30, so another hour and 15. Really like to get as many people as possible tonight. So please be mindful that some of the same arguments have been made on both sides and we, we, we can hear you all. We know what you're saying and we've caught it. We're not counting track of how many people have said the same thing. We are trying to understand new and interesting and or different viewpoints. Who's next?
Sarah Wallace.
You don't want to talk? Okay, so Mr. Davis, the last speaker in the room then, and we'll go to Zoom next.
So I have something prepared, but before I do, I think it's important to, to say a couple of pre words. First, thank you to the board. Sure. First, first thank you to the board. A volunteer board. Who am I? Great question. My name is Howard Davis and I'm a resident of Garrison. Been living here for 18 years and have grown my family here. Have a great affinity for Garrison and I'm here to speak in that regard. And before I do, thank you to the board, volunteer board, correct?
We have paid $2100 a year, so it's not exactly volunteer.
So practically a volunteer board. And the amount of work necessary to actually review what has been submitted is daunting. The environmental assessment form, as I understand it, that's the, the, the form that's been submitted includes a lot of information. But what's clear is here tonight, the comments that are made are really questioning a lot of the information that's in there. That there's more that needs to be done to fully understand the potential impacts. Now, we do appreciate the proposals, the benefits that might derive from the proposal. But this is a forum, I think Neil Zuckerman, chairman, had talked about what this is. That is, the status of where we are is a secret process. The benefits that derive to are, are important and they get balanced later. That's not part of this immediate issue and process. So the process is important and secret process is important. And I thought that to start, let me just frame it. And then I can talk about two particular issues that are very important in that regard. So the, the secret regulations have specified what the lead agency must do. Lead agency is the planning board. It's looking at this on behalf of other agencies. So to require an EIS for a proposed action, the lead agency must determine that the action may include the potential for at least one significant adverse environmental impact. To determine that an EIS will not be required for an action, the lead agency must determine either that there will be no adverse environmental impacts or that the identified adverse environmental impacts will not be significant. That's, that's the important aspect of where we are now. And that's where all of these comments have to be looked at in that fashion. Where is there the potential for a, a significant environmental impact? In my career, I'm an environmental lawyer. And I've spent my career basically helping people navigate and mitigate environmental risks. It's clear to me that the proposed development and scale may include the potential for at least one significant adverse environmental impact. And further investigation is needed to understand those potential risks. At this stage, secret requires the investigation of those impacts. At a later stage, the environmental impacts that are assessed, investigated, get to be balanced in a different form, a different stage. And the benefits and burdens will be talked about and go somewhere or nowhere. Depends on, on that, that later process. I'm going to focus my comments on two of the many potential impacts that have been raised in some manner by various individuals. Groundwater. Groundwater is a critical natural resource in our community and it is protected under the comprehensive plan. We do not have a municipal tap. In Garrison, we all rely on groundwater for drinking and other purposes. I do understand that our community has and is experienced water limitation at the Garrison landing, which really should inform some of what we're looking at. The EAF shows that in the past, installing irrigation wells on the Garrison Golf Course property impacted water wells of the surrounding community and caused at least one residence well to run dry and the golf course had to rectify it. Now, as someone who is keenly aware of environmental risks, I found that the lack of testing and assessments of groundwater in the EAF was concerning. I took it upon myself and I reached out to an expert hydrogeologist, Dr. Mahowski, to review the EAF. He found that flaws in the EAF hydrogeologic method and reliance on certain testing data led him to conclude that the proposed development would create a significant risk of adverse environmental impacts to groundwater, both on and off the proposed site. The EAF for the proposed redevelopment indicates that there will be extraction of significantly increased. that there will be extraction of significantly increased amounts of water from the bedrock. However, Dr. Mahowski concludes that there has not been testing conducted to assess the effects of any water extract, extraction from the bedrock or the potential impacts to the neighbors. The EAF proposes that the applicant would conduct a future test to assess offsite impacts only if required by Putnam County Health Department. That contingent investigation is not sufficient. On page 88 of the NYDEC Secret Handbook, it makes it clear future tests cannot support a negative declaration. Dr. Mahowski makes recommendations that a 72-hour well pumping test with offsite assessment be conducted in late summer, which is the critical time of maximum water demand when evapotranspiration exceeds the rainfall recharge. The essence of Dr. Mahowski's hydrogeologic concern is that the EAF did not appropriately consider the presence of bedrock, which limits water recharge and affects water transmission and availability. The submission, which I have copies up, is technical and for the sake of all, I will not attempt to describe it any further here, but I will submit it to the board for their review and suggest the board consult with their geologist, AKA RF.
Do you mind Howard sharing it with the applicant as well?
Yes, I intend to. So a positive declaration must be prepared, an investigation of groundwater conducted, which would protect the community and the applicant. Second issue wanted to discuss was traffic. A lot of places where traffic might be impacted were discussed and are going to be impacted by the scope of this proposed development. I'm going to discuss one intersection among the many at Snake Hill Road and 9D. I reviewed the EAF and found inconsistencies that could affect the significance of traffic impact at that location. Let me point to one example. Raw data collected by the applicant, applicant on Friday, October 23rd, 2020, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM indicates 47 vehicles turned left onto 9D from Snake Hill. It's in the raw data. The EAF reported 61 vehicles for that same time and circumstance. Now that inconsistent reporting could be the difference between significant and non-significant impact. And as we mentioned earlier, that the statutory requirement is to determine significance. And this is, so this is an important question about significance. A further assessment should be made about, should be made on the raw data without alteration to put the board in a position to determine significance. I also believe that the data collection is insufficient for this intersection as I could find data for that intersection only on one Friday and one Saturday in October 2020. This one assessment is not sufficient and a more complete data set should be required. There's a classification in the traffic assessment, a report card of sorts referred to as level of service. The LOS grade assigned could help to determine the significance of impact and whether signals or other mitigating methods are deemed necessary. Current traffic conditions designated in the EF, EAF at Snake Hill and Route 9D does not comport with my experience of being a longstanding user of the community roads at that intersection. I believe further assessment is critical as currently there's little traffic at that location in my experience. However, the EAF suggests that there's a lot of current traffic and it assigns an LOS of C, D, or E. Now, notwithstanding the possible inaccurate designations, based upon Phillips Town statute 175-40, imposing environmental performance standards, the LOS designation in the EAF already triggers the obligation to perform a traffic study. I'm going to conclude in a moment, but one more observation. Neil, I think you mentioned earlier that you were looking at whether the mitigation is practical or could be practical, but I think that that's later. This is a threshold question of whether there's significant or maybe significant environmental impact. And so the question of how to address it, that comes later. And that's why it's so important to do a, a more robust, full environmental assessment so that all of these issues can be brought to bear. And all of the, the issues that are being raised by the residents where there's uncertainty, there can be more certainty and a dialogue, scope it, address it, mitigate it. And that, that's where the conversation comes in. I'm going to commute in one moment.
Go for it.
So there cannot be a determination that there is no significant adverse impact from the scope of this proposed development. An EIS must be required and only then, when we're able to weigh the impacts, possible mitigation efforts, can this community attempt to balance those together. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, we'll go back to Zoom. Who's, uh, who's the next two up?
The Sean Sullivan and followed by Stan Frelick.
Mr. Sullivan.
Ms. Sullivan.
Ms. Sullivan, sorry. Ms. Sullivan, go ahead, you have the floor. Ms. Sullivan, you have the floor. She's not on mute. Ms. Sullivan, okay, what about Mike McKee? Uh, I don't think that's from her. Ms. Sullivan going once, we'll come back to you if we can't get, now she's back in there. What's, who's next? And Mike McKee, you did call him earlier, so let's do whoever he had.
He is actually next after Stan. I think Stan disappeared.
Stan Frelick, you up there?
Stan's gone. Sorry, it's a long list. Okay, Sam Fisher, followed by Jody Balkin.
I'm sorry, now I'm getting confused. Who's next?
They're not there, they're disappearing.
Oh, they're disappearing. All right, so what about Mike McKee then? He seems, is he still, is he?
Yeah, he's not there.
He's not there. Christine Forsh, I think is there, but, oh, he's using his wife's, they have a different name. He says, I'm here. And then Stan is here. Okay, I don't know what's going on. Let's, let's pause for one second. Hold on. Let's just go all the way back. Is the Sean Sullivan? Can you hear me? Can you put type something in the type in the chat, Mrs. Sean Sullivan? Can you hear me? Please type same in the chat if you can hear me, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, Ms. Sullivan is not typing in. I'm assuming she can hear us. So let's go next to Mr., was it Frelick, Stan Frelick you had said? All right, Mr. Frelick, can you hear me? Please type, oh, Ms. Sean Sullivan, Ms. Sullivan is here. Ms. Sullivan, can you hear me? You can hear, okay. I don't know, I don't know why we can't hear you. Ms. Sullivan, please say something in the mic. Maybe the people in Zoom land can hear you. Ms. Sullivan, say something, please. Can anyone, can you hear, can you put your, can you guys put your audio on? Maybe you'll hear that through Zoom. Can anyone in Zoom land hear Ms. Sullivan?
I don't, I don't hear anybody, Neil.
No one can hear Ms. Sullivan. Okay, Ms. Sullivan, I'm sorry, we're, we have technical difficulties with your hearing you. So we're going to go Mr. Frelick. Well, she's gone now. Let's, let's bring Mr. Frelick in, please. And next will be Mr. Frelick and then, then Mike McKee. Is it under your name or is it under Christine's name? You'll come after.
Stan Frelick is not in the list.
Stan is not on the list. Okay, so let's, can you please let in Christine Forsh then, please? F O E or F R O E? Okay. All right, Mike posing as Christine, you have the floor.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, there's that mellifluency.
All right, great. Okay. All right, one second.
Mike, who is next after Mike to get them ready? All right, Mr. Fisher, Sam Fisher, you'll be next.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, great. My name is Michael McKee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the planning board for your work. Our family has lived in Garrison for 22 years. We live a mile and a half from the Garrison Golf Course. I operate a small business in Garrison. Communities across the country are struggling with the problem of what to do with their marabund golf courses. Golf as a pastime is in significant decline. This has opened the door for previously silent residents to give voice to their opposition to the environmental damage being done by the management methods used for golf courses. However, they often solve their problem by building new housing developments or parks. I would not want to see that happen to our golf course. Hudson Valley Shakespeare is the best use of this space that I can imagine. The Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival team and their board of directors are the best stewards of this space that I can imagine. Many people, both for the project and, and speaking, you know, in a measured way against it, support the, the quality of this team and the efforts that they are making to do a good job of this transition from a golf course to a valuable artistic space. So the environment, the alternative is the environmental disaster of a decaying golf course. And the process going forward will involve the completion of this review, which I will, I hope will have a negative finding. And then ongoing reviews of every new structure on the property is, are proposed. The management of this property will be a continuing revolution with, so to speak, with many opportunities for community input and collaboration. A wider, more impactful use of this extraordinary space is proposed here. In the old days, a group of four would pass through the golf course and perhaps one of their number would say, gentlemen, isn't that a beautiful view? Now, as many people here carefully enumerated, many people will have an opportunity to appreciate that view. I also hope the tent is placed at the top of the ridge line where everyone can see it and appreciate the value that our residents place on the arts. Thank you. Very good, thank you.
Followed by Jody Balkin.
Sam Fisher.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay. Um, I wanted to laser beam in on a few issues. And although I am, I'm going to speak to you in the first person because I'd like you to understand the immediacy that some of us feel about this in terms of the issues that affect us around the golf course. The first thing I want to talk about is Coleman Road. Marcy and I have been here for 19 years. We live on 22 Coleman. We pull out of that road every single day for 19 years. And I think that makes us the experts on Coleman Road. There are times when it takes four minutes to get out of that road onto nine. I do not believe for a single second that when you have 1,000 more visitors or more, that that burden is going to be mitigated or lessened even with the traffic light. What will probably happen is you will get a backup of cars and every single day that we try to pull out of that road, we will have to ask permission to leave our own home. Okay? Secondly, the water table. Our well has run dry once already. Okay? And I do not believe that there is a guarantee that we will not have to dig yet another well, probably at our own expense. Okay? Thirdly, as far as light pollution goes, increasing the speed of, of and throughput of traffic, even if that works, isn't going to mitigate light coming to people's homes. All right? And it's also not going to mitigate the sound that rolls up the hill that we all hear from Route 9. And as it is, we hear it. We hear trucks, we hear motorcycles. This is a direct impact to us every single night and it will only get worse. Okay? The other thing I want to talk about is the, the remedies. Right? So when these things go bad, and they will, what are, are our remedies? So when I am trying to pull out of Coleman Road and I can't get into the road, am I, is someone going to magically come down from HBSF and start directing traffic so I can leave my own home? When my shower doesn't work, is someone going to come over to my house and dig a new well? When I have a property damage or maybe even personal damage, perhaps caused by a visitor to HBSF? Is HBSF going to say, well, Mr. Fisher, that's between you and whoever did it. It really doesn't have anything to do with us. Is HBSF insured for damage? Will they be liable for it? Or like I said, will they just throw their arms up in the air and say, you're on your own? Okay? These are all issues that I do not believe have been addressed. And I believe that once this goes through, we will be powerless to bargain from any kind of strength whatsoever, if any of these things do happen. So, you know, Marcy and I came here for two acre zoning and we paid for a home that was reflective of two acre zoning. And I do not believe that, you know, and frankly, I looked at the roster and I'm seeing less and less of Shakespeare and more and more other things. You know, some of them written by Davis McCallum. I don't really see this as Shakespeare anymore. I see it as a regional hub that's designed to bring as many people as possible, not from our area, as people claim that it's going to be some kind of enrichment for the community. Right? It's really about bringing people from other places to our backyard. So I gotta say, I, I feel like a negative finding would be a slap in the face, a hard slap to every single resident that rings the golf course and is near it. Okay? And that's, that's all I have to say. That's all I feel about it.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Who's next?
Jody Balkin, followed by the Sean Smith.
Sullivan.
Sullivan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Jody.
Okay, um, my name's Jody Balkin and together with my husband, Chris Dickerson, we've lived in Garrison for the past seven and a half years. We live on Phillips Brook Road, very close to the Route 9 overpass and about 500 yards from the entrance of the Garrison Golf Course. So you can rightfully say that we have a very vested interest in the outcome of this proposal, more so than most as it is our water supply that could be affected. It's our environment that is going to be bombarded by the cacophony created by the new traffic, not to mention the inherent dangers new traffic brings. And it's our bucolic environment that is being fundamentally violated. We, like many here consciously bought a home in a rural conservation zone, not one adjacent to an entertainment complex. And we believe that this could become a very slippery slope. Once you allow this, what do you allow next? An AMC multiplex? Or is that too commercial? So what if they show Shakespeare movies there? It just does, it's a gateway drug to more development, which is how we see it, especially when it's in our backyard. To those who are saying, as one person actually wrote in the, having current this week, or it was last week, that most of the people who are against the Shakespeare Festival and its move to Garrison are those that live in the immediate vicinity, you're damn right. And, and there's a reason for that. What does it say to you that no one that we know of in the immediate vicinity on Coleman, on Fraser, on Phillips Brook, on Snake Hill and on Travis Corners is for this development as it has been presented? Shouldn't that matter? You know, we're hearing a lot of voices from Cold Spring that are very pro this proposal. And I get it. I get, I think it was a few miles from my home. I might be for it too. We love Shakespeare, we love festivals, we love a good show. But I can guarantee you that if this proposal's new site was on Lane Gate Road or in your Molly's Crotch or somewhere else, there would be a whole new group of rightfully pissed off locals to contend with. So if you wouldn't want this entertainment complex across the street from your home, then we think that you need to stand with your neighbors who will be adversely affected by it, just as you'd hope we'd stand by you if you felt your peace and your safety was being intruded upon. While many of us who are against this massive development don't understand, what, what many of us against this massive development don't understand is why this has become such an outsized, all year round project? Why isn't there a gracious compromise? You don't have a summer home at Baskerville anymore. That's okay, please pitch your tent at Garrison, just not on the top of the hill. And don't overstay your welcome. Have your three months and give us a. And don't overstay your welcome. Have your three months and give us a chance to miss you, same as before. My second very brief point is, in a town that is making such a hullabaloo about short-term rentals and trying to prohibit or regulate them, how can you be okay with 20 or more houses being built for the sole purpose of housing transient workers? I personally don't have a problem with short-term rentals in our community, but if you do, then you need to apply that same logic to this proposal. How about instead of building new homes, use those that are already here and available for short-term rent? Work with the community and the homeowners who rely on the income from short-term rentals and create a network of living arrangements in those already existing dwellings. New buildings that are LEED certified are certainly good, but no new buildings is even better for the climate. Finally, I want to make it clear that my husband and I are both very pro theater. Chris was an opera singer for 17 years. He's performed in a few shows at the Deep Blue Theater. We actively support theater in many ways, and many of our friends in Phillips Center are part of the theater community. We're all for it, just not all year long and not in our backyard. Please compromise, reduce the scope, three months, a tent. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jody. Who's next? Zashawn Sullivan. All right, Miss Sullivan, let's try it again.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, I reloaded the page.
I turned and he's one of the young kids who worked at the golf course. She's killing it right now in the room.
Do you, Jody, and take her off panelists? Zashawn, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Jean Sullivan. I've lived in Garrison for 43 years. I consider myself still a carpetbagger. I would like to start by a phrase that was given to me by Sandra Nice, who was a first-grade teacher at Garrison School. My children both had Sandra. And one of the things that Sandra always talked about was the sense of community. And I believe that this Shakespeare project does not fit in with the sense of community. They are not willing to compromise and fit into a comprehensive plan that many volunteers work many hours on. I know that light pollution has been talked about. The neighbors' wells have been talked about, the traffic at Route 9 and Snake Hill Road, and a new light being put there have all been talked about. One of my biggest concerns, I think, with this project is the tent on the ridge. A few years ago, there was a wind turbine put at a private home on Long and Winding Road off of 9D. And everybody, the town board, every other board was all up in arms about this wind turbine and the view shed. Well, I can see the wind turbine from my lawn. The sun has to hit it just right to see the spokes turning. And, but I believe that the tent on the ridge at the Garrison Golf Course is going to be seen from breakneck to many miles away, and it is just very wrong to do that. I would also like to address the trails, walking trails, that are open to the public on the land. And I'm not sure what they have in mind, but the old phrase, build it and they will come. I think all that it might take is a few New York Times articles about the open space and the views, and it will become another breakneck. People parking on 9, people parking, filling the parking lots.
Miss Sullivan, you still there? Miss Sullivan, give you another chance to try and get your technology back on. Can you hear us? Miss Sullivan, we lost you. We were rocking. We were walking trails, public, New York Times. I got it all down. All right, we're going to move on. Let's go to Stan Frelick posing as Carol Markquand. Mr. Frelick.
Yeah, here I am. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm Stan Frelick. I've lived in Garrison with my wife and children for just about 30 years. We live across Route 9 and up the hill overlooking the Garrison Golf Course. We moved here for the quiet rural atmosphere, and we love Garrison. And we're very concerned about this development of a Hudson River Arts Complex in our midst. And we're concerned that this will destroy the quiet atmosphere that we moved here for and have enjoyed all this time. I should have said at the start, thank you to the chairman, thank you to the planning board members. I too appreciate all the work reading the thousand pages. I've tried to read them myself. Also, I want to say that we have been, my wife Carol and I, supporters of Shakespeare, very loving supporters and financial supporters. I believe we've attended every single performance over these years, as well as rehearsals for those performances. To give a little more background, my background in Garrison, I was on the Garrison School District Board for seven years. And the last two of those years as president, and I also was on the Garrison Fire District Board for four years. We love the plays, the atmosphere, the view, but that's not the issue, as so many have said. Our town has worked very hard over these years to maintain its rural character, starting in 2001, with an extended process of charrettes culminating in our comprehensive plan. The plan was just approved again in November after a three-year process of bi-weekly and monthly meetings attended by 12 to 15 people each time. The Garrison Golf Course is number 10 on the Open Space Index and is prioritized to be preserved, conserved. None of the currently proposed uses in this developing plan will be allowed under the current zoning. The entire plan and zoning requirements will be undone by this development. And most importantly, I want to say that it should be noted that the plan contains no special exception for our friends. I want to repeat that. There's no special exception in the comprehensive plan for our friends. This approval of this could create a precedent under which another developer could approach us with another plan outside the rules and cite this development as an example. My question is, why do we even have these rules at all if a developer can come and ask us to mitigate them? Why have them if they can be mitigated? I also want to discuss money. It's possibly crass to discuss, but nothing has been said about it so far. I want to point out that, again, that Shakespeare Festival is a nonprofit, and so its tax return, called the Form 990, is a public document and is accessible through their website, other places as well. Unfortunately, they only show their 2019 Form 990 dated November 2020. The 2024 990 was due to the government by November 2021, but it's not shown. Looking at their budget as shown, you can see that it was 3.3 million per year, and that they have assets or had about 1 million. Revenues in 2019 were higher, up to 4.8 million, because donor, identified as donor number 43, gave 1.5 million to start their capital campaign. I note these figures first to emphasize the magnitude of the proposed development, which they say will generate about $7.5 million, more than double their current operating budget. Also, their past expenses include about a quarter of a million for rent, a quarter of a million for temporary housing, and considerable costs for taking the tent up and down. These costs would be eliminated, and as I will next explain, will be approximately matched by the increased taxes resulting for the taxpayers of Garrison. Coming to the taxes, so the developer plans buildings which will exceed a square footage, homes that might be built under the current zoning laws. However, as opposed to a handful of homes, this development would not pay taxes. Most importantly, they would not pay Garrison's school taxes. And yet, the final EAF claims that it will save us money by preventing urban sprawl because the houses that would otherwise be built would contain children that would cost the school district more than the houses would pay in taxes. First, this ignores the fact that only a handful of houses could be built, only two under the current PDD governing the entire 200 acres. Secondly, the facts are that the additional children would be welcome without cost because the enrollment of the Garrison School is currently so small, just an average of 13 students per class. Additional children could be added without any additional teachers or classrooms. High school children would generate tuition costs, but currently about half of all high school children in Garrison, 10 private high schools, cost the district nothing. I believe this error in the EAF shows the, I'll use the word ignorance of the local situation shown by the developer. They cite statewide statistics, nothing to do with Garrison. If the Garrison Golf Course did not exist and a dozen or so houses were built on the property as the EAF proposes, they could generate $200,000 or $300,000 in taxes without much cost to the school. This developer is asking us to continue to give up this tax revenue and to accept an additional $125,000 that the Garrison Golf Course would no longer pay. The developer uses a smaller number because it includes the taxes that the private Davis House to be built would pay, even though they say the date for the building of this house is unknown. And in this particular case, there is strangely no offset, no offset for the school costs that might be generated by this house. Later, the EAF does offset the potential domestic water use by this possible house. Why this inconsistent treatment? I suspect because figures are being used to show reduced impact on the community. I want to discuss stewardship also, which is mentioned over and over again. It's not my expertise by any means, but so much has been said about it that I want to cite what is said on that same tax form, Form 990 that the Shakespeare filed with the government. That Form 990 includes the mission of the Shakespeare Festival. I want to quote it on that form. "The Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival engages the widest possible audience in a fresh conversation about what is essential in Shakespeare's plays. A theater lives in the here and now, at the intersection between the virtuosity of the actors, the imagination of the audience, and the inspiration of text." Well, I believe that's a wonderful statement, but it doesn't say anything about the environment or stewardship of the land. I have a series of questions that I think the planning board should address in the future. First of all, can we have financial projections sufficient to convince us that the Shakespeare Festival will be able to sustain the art center? I've heard rumors that Phase 1 of the project will cost $37 million. Is this so? And if so, why does Shakespeare claim that it is just moving up the road? Second, can we have staffing plans for the maintenance of the grounds, security, et cetera? All of these issues will impact the neighbors. Third, will the artists-in-residence buildings, which are planned to be rented on a short-term rental basis, when not in use by actors all year round, will they be on the tax rolls? Will they be subject to short-term rental rules? These homes will house a maximum of 88 people at any one time in 12 buildings, five of them two-story buildings, total square footage of 27,400 feet, including a utility lounge building for actors, in addition to the 20-room hotel with a maximum capacity of 40. Fourth, will Shakespeare agree to make payments in lieu of taxes as seen in Hudson does on some of its properties? Next, will noise studies be performed at elevations above and around the property? Even one of the testing recorders on the site showed above-compliance noise levels. What further sound mitigations will you call for to protect the neighbors from the tent on the highest point with only a partial berm to be erected? Next, have the local fire and EMS services given written notices that no additional equipment will be needed to accommodate the additional people and buildings on the property? Such costs would be borne by Garrison residents alone. And finally, what will happen to the value of nearby properties? Will they decline? Again, thank you to all of the board members. I appreciate this time very much.
Bob Lieber, followed by Samer Osman.
All right, we're going to do a couple more from Zoom, and then we're going to try and take a couple of people here in the room. Can you just repeat who's next? Mr. Lieber, go ahead.
Samer Osman.
Cameron. My name, just a thumbs up if you guys can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry. Okay, my name is Bob Lieber. I've lived in Cold Spring for over 15 years. To give some context to this, I'm a board member of a number of local land conservation organizations, as well as a former public official responsible for both economic as well as cultural development. And I know from my own experience sitting in your seats that everything that can be said has been said, but not everyone has yet said it. So I will try and be brief. I'd like to start and thank all the members of the planning board for your tireless effort and commitment to improving the lives of all the members of our community. Many dare say, most of the people who show up at these sessions are speaking out of their own narrow self-interest, but you collectively get to exercise the judgment to determine as what in the best interest of the broader community. And I know personally how thankless this process can be. I'd also like to take a second and thank Chris Davis for his vision, for his generosity and his patience in realizing his goal, not letting this 300-acre site turn into a large, high-density development site. It's been over 20 years that he's carried this land for the benefit of the entire community while searching for the right, long-term land conservation solution. Listening to this proposal, the proposal that HBSF has provided is financially self-sustaining. It requires no local taxpayer subsidies and is a tristic asset to the community. It's a supremely low-impact environmental way of creating both cultural and economic activity that betters the lives for all the members of our community. This is a great community, and this is a great country. And as painful as it could be at times, this process is working. I have continued to follow the process and listen to most of these sessions, and I think the applicant has addressed most of the concerns that have been raised. Yes, this is a dynamic process, and it does not stand still. And if it did, people would have a real reason to be annoyed. But all sides have had the opportunity to be heard, and I reiterate, the compromises have been made, and HBSF has made compromises, as they should have, and will undoubtedly continue to do so as we move forward. But I think at this point, compared to any of the reasonable alternatives that have been presented, the HBSF plan put before the board is actually well-balanced between the narrow self-interest of some and the broader community as a whole, and I believe a supermajority of the residents will benefit from this permanent solution to this site. I know personally, HBSF and its leadership have a long track record, has terrific stewards of land conservation in our community, and can make this happen in a long-term, sustainable way. And I strongly encourage the board to support a negative secret declaration. Thank you for your time.
Before we go to the next speaker, I just want to be clear. My comment about ground rules and no personal attacks goes also for the chat. I know some people are using the chat to make opinionated remarks about speakers. I prefer that whomever is making those remarks will stop that. We've asked you not to do it in person. We asked you not to do it electronically. Thank you. Who's next?
Mr. Osman.
Good evening. My name is Samer Osman. I moved here to Garrison four years ago to the day. I'm going to keep it short. Just two issues. The first is traffic. I know many people have harped on that. I live on Route 9, and I have to cross the street every day to get the mail. It is dangerous. In the four years that I've lived here, there have been a number of accidents. In the four years that I've lived here, there have been a number of accidents, and that's only going to increase. The study says that it's not going to get any worse, but I don't see how that's possible. The second thing is water. When, in 1999, according to the report. When the wells were dug. The. There was a review done for the surrounding properties. Some wells were dug deeper, some wells were moved, some wells had their pumps lowered to accommodate that. With this plan, the amount of water that's going to be used is going to be doubled, as opposed to the golf course, which was around 9,000 gallons. Now they're expecting around 18,000 gallons. And there is no plan for any of that review for the surrounding properties. So I think just on those grounds. We have to. We are for a positive declaration. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Osman. We're going to go back to the room. We have a few people still on Zoom. We'll come to the question whether we'll be able to get to you tonight in a few minutes. We're going to do a couple, a few names in the room, probably go for 15 minutes in the room, and then we'll go for a few minutes back to Zoom, and then we'll have a couple of minutes with the board to chat about administrative topics. So Mr. Nolan, next, you still hear Mr. Nolan, then followed by Luke Hilbert. All right, Mr. Nolan, go ahead.
You think?
Hi.
I didn't know you got paid.
We talk too much about, they may take that away.
Can I borrow a quarter?
What?
Can I borrow a quarter? I don't have much to say because everyone else has said it. The project is too big. It's too big for Garrison. The applicants have a tin ear for the community. They don't speak about any kind of managing the size, the dimensions, or the impact of the project now. That hasn't happened. I wish it would. It hasn't. There hasn't been any of that. I've reached out. I know other people who've reached out. There's been no response. I think that maybe the. The core problem is the ambition of the project. This is not the Shakespeare that we know, that was born in Manitoba, and that lived and grew up. At Basque Bell. This is a regional entertainment complex. That's something different under the sun. It's got the same name. But that's the only thing that's the same about it. And this portrayal of bringing Basque Bell up the hill is utterly false. I want them there. I want them on the golf course. I want Shakespeare to be there. And I think there are ways to do that, that don't require the community to shape itself or themselves to the festival, or for the festival to yield what makes it great to the community. I really do think that there's a middle ground there. You guys are kind of charged with that. Chairman Zuckerman, you were the one who posed the Howard Baker question a long time ago. When is big too big? And really, all these points that are being made tonight, which need to be made, these are the boxes you guys have to tick, I understand that. These are the mitigations that need to be proposed, and that you need to be satisfied by. Are part of a broader question, which is, is this is something of this size, these dimensions, this impact, this kind of community-altering vibe, something that we want. In Garrison, I don't, but I want Shakespeare here. There's the gap. People are willing to try to begin to fill that gap. I think it's possible to do that. That's my optimism part. My pessimism part is that there has been such a clear focus by the applicant on, their words, not mine, a regional focus. And the Hudson Valley region extends from arguably Albany to Yonkers. And that's a lot bigger than Garrison, Cold Spring, and the neighboring communities. And there's only one other thing that I wanted to say. When I first heard about the project and read about it, there were two things that concerned me. One was the word regional. And the other one. Is the fact that the primary theater tent would be sited on the highest point of the acreage that Mr. Davis was donating. That's a scenic view shed, even though I know there's no brown line on the overlay that shows that. Go stand on it. Go stand on it, and you know that you are at, on the top of ridge. And it happens to be a ridge that has one of the best views on the planet. I would put that view in a calendar with 11 other views from anywhere on Earth, and it could hold its own. I don't want to put a 40-foot-tall tent. That holds 540 people every night for perhaps six months, or whatever it is, and that remains standing all year. This is not a tent that comes down at the end of every performing season. This is a permanent thing. And what you look at. Is Storm King Mountain. And Storm King Mountain is where the American environmental movement began. That's where Robert Boyle and the Hudson River Fishermen's Association said to Con Edison, "No. You can't destroy this mountain. You can't deface this mountain." And they won in court. And an environmental case that was based on those terms had never, ever been won in court before, especially against a utility. Now we're going to, I don't want this to happen. I don't want to be. I don't want my town to be the town that takes its thumb and puts it into the eye of the American environmental movement, and that disses everybody and everything that's ever put any effort into that. Boyle, the Fisherman's Association, the Riverkeeper, the Clearwater Sloop, Pete Seeger, that's what you're looking at when you look up the river. And I hope that as part of the conversation, as things go on, the importance of that view shed to our community, to the Hudson Valley, to the whole country. Is recognized, and that that's, that's one of the things that we're able to, to do as part of a broader modification of the whole process. That's all I got for you. I'm sorry, Neil.
All right, Luke Hilbert, come on, Luke.
Good evening, Chairman Zuckerman, members of the board. Sure. Right. I'm a member of this community, and as a resident of the community, I've been following, I've been following this as a lot of members have, from afar. And it wasn't until just the other day that I was approached by somebody to represent a small group of homeowners that are uniquely impacted by this project, that I really dove into what's going on here. I enjoy the Shakespeare Festival. I think that would be great for them to have a permanent home. This application. I, correct, I'm speaking, speaking on behalf of other individuals. Who are uniquely impacted by this project. This application just isn't about Shakespeare. It's not about Mr. Davis. It's about a large commercial development. It's in a rural conservation zone. It has significant impacts to the community for many years to come. We have our codes, our procedures in SECRE. They apply equally to all, to protect the residents. Our. Excuse me, our comprehensive plan tells us that we should support not-for-profits. That's certainly true, but this is a commercial business enterprise here. This is a larger development. We need, we don't give complete deference here. We apply everything equally. I think a lot of the points that I'd like to make here individually have been made today. But as you said, Chairman Zuckerman, this is, we're here to review SECRE to make sure that. The, the impacts of this project are being mitigated. As we move forward, we look at the impact of the tent from a very prominent ridgeline. It was just talked about. This was, what we see from that tent is Storm King Mountain, the birthplace of the environmental movement. That was where it was decided that view sheds are a naturally protected resource. We're putting a tent in that resource. Will that tent be viewed from Storm King? It will certainly be visible from all over, from all over Garrison. We're hearing that this is a great development for the community. And, you know, look at what, look at what could happen. It could be much worse. What other potential projects have been viewed? The purpose. Sorry. Purpose allow us to, the course that we're taking here, these less significant impact on the environment. We need limits to the number of events per day. We need to limit the number of people. The traffic studies, traffic's been talked about significantly. The studies have been done in a time where, I drive every day, I notice there are fewer people on the road. People aren't out as much. And I think we need a deeper dive into the traffic. Somebody mentioned earlier today that when you leave Basque Bell, we know where all the traffic's going. Yet he mentioned four or five different routes out of Basque Bell. There's going to be one route. You're on Route 9, and you're heading north or you're heading south. It will have a significant impact for the community. We've all driven that, that stretch. We know where Coleman comes in, we know where Foxglove comes in. But we're going to be introducing all of these tourists to these same intricacies that we have been able to navigate over the years. Another important point that needs to be discussed, reviewed further, and mitigated is, is the impacts of water. So, as you said earlier, SECRE review is for the entirety of this project. It's not for Phase One, it's for the entirety of this 30-year build-out of the project. We have to be ensure that all the environmental impacts are mitigated. The residents have all expressed concerns and need for additional mitigation. And I believe that they, that the applicant should come forth and address those to the, to the residents, and give the residents an opportunity to reply. There may be one or more significant environmental impacts from the proposed action. We ask that you issue a positive declaration, as the EIS will allow for examination of ways to avoid and reduce these environmental impacts. Further, although it's not required, we request that, we request that scoping be part of the EIS process. It's clear that the community, in particular those neighbors that are most impacted by the project, feel that their concerns, whether it be due to the nature of a Zoom meeting or the project, haven't been adequately addressed. Scoping would allow the participation of the community in that process. Additionally, many of these meetings have told Garrison residents, it could be worse. Scoping would allow a deeper dive into that to see what other options there are. This is the most significant development, as you stated, Chairman Zuckerman, in the last dozen years in this community. We are the stewards of this community. You are the stewards of this community. We should give this development. Proper consideration and the attention that it deserves, and give the community a chance to comment on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Let's take one more in the room. Jack Dickarhoff, did you want to speak? He spoke last time. Jim Cordaris. Jim Cordaris. No. Kevin Davidson. All right, why don't you come up, Kevin?
Thank you. Kevin Davidson, I'm a nearly five-year resident of Garrison. A question for the board, have you considered time limits on the speaking? Okay, just wondering.
Is that all I want to say?
No. Just so that more people could speak, you know, so everyone has a time, just a question.
You know, I'll just answer that briefly.
Yeah.
I opened it, you didn't come to the last one, obviously, but I opened explaining why we didn't have time limits.
I did not, I missed that.
Okay, well, you missed a really good time, so. Why don't you, why don't you keep going before we waste any more of your time? Keep going.
You're not wasting my time.
Okay, go ahead.
You're having a lot of time here, so I'm just saying that if you'd.
Mr. Davidson, let's, let's go ahead.
Anyhow, thank you. I live in Garrison, I live on Indian Brook, my land abuts Route 9, so I'm very familiar with Route 9. Let's just talk about Route 9 for one second. It is a problem today. It was a problem yesterday, and it actually has nothing to do with this project. We need to address Route 9 on its own. Beyond that, I'm here because I find that my biggest disappointment in this community stems from living in a community of no. This community is not evolving to meet today's reality. Lack of high-speed internet, electric vehicle charging stations, restaurants and goods and services, to name a few. This translates to people having to leave Phillips Town in order to get what they need and desire, which is lost revenue and lost opportunity for us. I am 100% in support of the current plan, which to my understanding includes everything that we've talked about today, so I won't repeat that. I think that what Chris Davis is doing should be commended and praised. If he was trying to sell this off for a mini-mall or to build, and I did the math, if it's two acres per home, we could have hundreds of homes there, and that's not what we're talking about. And this is my time, thank you. So we could be dealing with rows and rows of homes and trees dropped by helicopters, that would be one thing. But the current plan honors the land and enriches our community, and provides some sorely needed attention to our area, and helps us for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Cheryl, let's take a few more. Let's go till, we got to go till 10:25, so let's try and get two or three more.
Tamara Hayward, followed by Katie Cuciarilla. Yes, hello, actually, my name is Tamara Hayward Benjamin. And my husband spoke last, at the last meeting. I'd like to thank everyone, especially the public, for their interest and their community spirit, and actually being a good citizen. Thank the Planning Board for being there. And actually, thank the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival for attempting to satisfy this SECRE process. What I'd like to speak about tonight. Is buried deep in the. In the documents, and it has to, it pertains to the soil contamination that has been discovered on the property. Now, this is a golf course. And it probably wasn't unexpected that something like mercury, arsenic. Lead. Chromium. And other elements such as DDT, DDE, and DDD, which were banned in 1962. Were found. Also, other pesticides. Peptic ore oxide, alpha chordane, gamma chordane, and chordane. What to do about them? That's the question. They, the, the outfit called GeoDesign took 16 very shallow soil samples, and came up with these substances exceeding all the limits. How do we mitigate this? That's a big question. That's what I'd like to know. I think Shakespeare tried to answer it, but there's so many unanswered questions. If they were able to find so many toxic substances in a, in a shallow soil sample. What happens if they take a deeper sample? Are they going to find more? Should they do more than 16 samples? Of course they should. Should they? Should they also look at other chemicals that could be in the soil? Yes, I think they should. I think this is something that really needs to be addressed, and, and the answer is not in the EAF.
Ms. Benjamin?
I would like to know if Shakespeare has a plan. What, how are they going to remediate? How are they going to mitigate? They're going to disturb 40, almost 46 acres. What happens to the soil when it's exposed? And it rains? Does it wash into Phillips Brook? Does it wash into New York City's water supply? The Catskill Aqueduct is right below there. What happens to it? What happens to the dust when they clear it? They, in their documents, they say they're only going to disturb five acres at a time. But they need to really answer these questions. I'd really like to know. What, what the plan is for mitigation. Also, I noticed also that they tested the water for these elements. In the ponds, all of these elements were found in the sediment, not in the water. In the wells? All the wells were clear. I was just wondering if they tested the sediment in the well, or if just, if they just tested the water. I don't know, those. I don't know. Those, those questions aren't answered. We need to continue this process. We need a positive declaration, if only to address this situation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hayward. Or Ms. Benjamin.
Katie Cucciaro, followed by.
Well, I, I think we're gonna have to hold it there, so.
But it's Katie.
Okay.
Good evening. Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Planning Board for allowing me to speak. My name is Katie Cucciaro. I am a resident of Phillips Town and I currently reside in Garrison. I was raised and run my family's business in Cold Spring. I was also a member of the newly adopted comprehensive plan. Over the many years, I've watched my father, other family members and local businesses come before the planning board. Most of the time, they were looking to grow and expand on their current properties that fell within their property rights and zoning. On other occasions, they would propose to develop vacant pieces of land to provide and serve the needs of the community. Appalachian Market and Stanko Auto Body are two examples of that. During these endeavors, I recognize that expanding or bringing in new developments, even if they fall within the property and zoning codes. Was still a long and expensive process. My family developed many properties and none of them are the size of this applicant's project. And we would be asked to jump through hoops and would spend extensive amounts of time and money to get anything accomplished. Over the years, I've witnessed businesses want to come to Phillips Town and some in which our community had a need for. But they couldn't bear the financial or time that Phillips Town put on them, that they had to move to other communities. I'm bringing up all this background because as I have been following this proposed application, it seems to be handled in a different way. I am alarmed that after the years thought and formation of the comprehensive plan. That was only passed a few months ago, that this application is receiving so much support from the town boards. There are over a handful of items within that document that this application goes against. One of them being goal number one, which is sustain our role and historic character. And I will read it. Preserving our community character is a sustainable way. Is the overarching theme of the comprehensive plan. Phillips Town is a unique place characterized by great natural beauty, historic places and a sense of small-town community. This uniqueness is fragile and could be lost through a rapid influx of development. The existence of open space is critical to maintaining our unique character. Development should be done in a way that is sensitive to the town's special nature. The long-term sustainability, resilience and safety of the town and health of its residents should be considered in every action taken. It is my understanding that the comprehensive plan was to be used as a guidance for the planning, zoning and town boards to avoid bias. All those that have worked so hard on that plan deserve an explanation of why it may not be followed. What doors will this open if we now go against a newly adopted document? Another point I want to bring up is the traffic study. I live on South Mountain Pass, which is. Used at times as a cut-through for Route nine and nine D. The traffic study that was conducted does not include or take into consideration the amount of traffic that may occur. If cars take Snake Hill to nine D to, to the Bear Mountain Bridge. It also doesn't consider the increased traffic South Mountain Pass may receive. We already have a freeway and overload of traffic during rush hour when the goat trail is closed on the south side of us. If there's a blockage on the north and based on the amount of visitors this application plans to bring in, what does that mean for our rural dirt road? I urge this planning board to really consider what precedent this would make if this project receives a negative declaration. I would ask and encourage that this applicant be treated as all other applicants are. There seems to be a red carpet instead of red tape. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cucciaro. All right, so uh, we're gonna, so two, two question, two topics for the board. The first is, we need to reschedule the public hearing, sorry, the public, the site visit that we were supposed to do of the bridge. That was postponed because of the weather. I'm gonna suggest we use the same date, March sixth, that we had proposed before. Can I have a motion of that effect? Heidi, second. Discussion, anyone? Favor say aye. For Hollis, does that work? Ten thirty on that date?
Ten thirty on March sixth, yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, second topic. So can you please, those members of the public still here, who would like to speak still in the public physical room? That hasn't spoken before. So who has not spoken before? Miss Davis? Two, anyone else that has not spoken before?
Did you wanna speak, Rhonda?
No, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to count how many. Ms. Davis, this gentleman. I'm counting. I'm using my counting skills. One, two, just raise your hand. It's like school, yeah, three. All right, and ma'am, did you speak last time? You did, okay. And then online, I see, what do you see? How many? All right, so we've got seven more people that wanna speak online. If, again, if anyone else still wants to speak online, please press your raise hand buttons with a proper account. All right, so we have ten more. I'm guessing right now we have ten people remaining who wanna speak. So we have a couple of choices, board members. We can either A, do it now. B, we can do it at the next meeting, or C, we can do it a, one more special hearing. Uh, which I, we could do the following week after the planning board meeting on March twenty-four. Thank you. So I'd like to just get a sense from the board members, cuz I, I don't know if we're fully counting all the people still wanna speak, but that's at least ten more people. Um, that's at least an hour more of conversation, at least, and it's been three hours. So thoughts?
I think I'll pinch it out of the opportunity.
Okay, all right.
And however they get it, whether it's this venue or Zoom.
Same sentiment?
I would have a special meeting.
Special meeting?
Yeah.
Run through it?
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Yeah, thoughts?
I'd rather incorporate it into a regular meeting.
Yeah, Peter? So the two choices are to do it at the regular meeting on the seventeenth or do another special meeting so we can. Personally think we can run through and be done with the public hearings or anyone else needs to speak gets it out of their way.
Okay, and where did we get?
These two, we have one for special, one for the regular meeting.
I, I tried to do the regular.
Regular meeting, folks, all right, my, my colleagues on the Zoom. Kim, Kim, you look like Alfred E. Newman, what me worry? I love it. Dennis, go ahead. Kim doesn't wanna say anything.
The regular meeting's good with me incorporating it, but that was, is that gonna be the final on this, Neil?
I, I, it's when we're done hearing the public speakers.
Okay.
Having their voice. I think that's what Peter is saying and it's certainly my sentiment. Laura?
Regular meeting is fine.
Okay, so we're gonna do it then. The sentiment of board is to do it on March seventeenth. Uh, I don't know what's on the agenda at this point. I'm hoping we can get through the remaining speakers and we'll probably just figure out a way to do that. Okay, regular meeting. All right, so, so without, I'm assuming, all right, we just get a question here. Uh, yes, Mr. Pat and Kat Downing are asking, is it seriously on St. Patrick's Day? Unfortunately, it is not a. It is not a holiday for the plane board. A normal meeting will still occur on St. Patrick's Day. Having come in on, having come in on Yom Kippur, I can tell you that major holidays get, don't get the same attention. Religious holidays not get the same attention as federal ones, so it should. I agree, Mr. Downing, I agree. Uh, anyway, so my thought is then we'll do the, the, continue the public hearing on the seventeenth of March during a regular scheduled meeting. Yes? All right, now I'm just gonna stay, I will be on vacation Turks and Caicos, so I'll be joined by Zoom. So I'll have to designate one of my deputies to provide, I'll join at the chagrin of my wife, but I'll be on Zoom. Yeah, I heard there's no internet down there. All right. Motion to adjourn. All right, thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it. Cheryl, thank you. Celia, thank you.